Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Here.
Laughin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Shortell.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Cervone.
Here.
All miraculously present and accounted for. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Good evening. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Question to the Chair, through the Chair to the Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, last meeting you said that you had one applicant for the ARPA money and you were going to review it. Have you made a decision on that?
We interviewed the applicant and we most probably will be proceeding with looking to hire them. We'll be bringing the matter to the council.
Do you know approximately how much the salary would be or the pay?
We had not opened, there's a two envelope process, so the monetary side of it still has to be opened, so that's, that's the matter that still needs to be reviewed.
So you think by the next meeting the council will know?
It's possible. I can't say at this point.
I'm just wondering, because other towns are really far along on this process where they're already starting to grant money to people that really need it.
I realize, but I also have read a lot about things that I would not feel are appropriate under the Act, so we need to have some sound advice as to what is authorized and what isn't.
Well, okay, then that brings me right to, this is from CCM, and you said you belong to CCM. It says here, "Would investments in improved outdoor spaces, e.g. parks, for the ineligible use of funds as response to the public health emergency and/or its negative economic impacts?" And the answer is, there are multiple ways the investments in improving outdoor spaces could qualify as eligible uses. And it goes on, I don't, you don't want me to read the whole thing, "The programs and services can include," and it goes on to building neighborhoods, parks, recreation facilities, health facilities, and it says, and the list that they have is "The interim final rule provides a non-exhaustive list," which means it's a large list, but it's not everything. So are you even going to entertain any of those items?
Well, you're mentioning all governmental use of the money. I think the primary issue initially will be to provide assistance and aid to those who suffered in the private sector, individuals, small businesses, nonprofits, tourism, those are the people that we should not be forgetting. In addition, yes, there are all kinds of projects that can be pursued by government, but often those projects have to be linked by census tract to underserved, poorer areas of a community. So there, there are multiple layers that have to be reviewed. It is not simple.
Well, you just mentioned poorer, so towns such as Westport and Greenwich are going to provide parking lots, ADA improvements to their buildings, sidewalks, paving, digitized records. One of these more towns that has more economically advantage than Wallingford is going to start with hybrid town meetings. They're also, where the people from the home can also participate, microphones in the, here that everybody could hear. One town is buying all new cars, all electric, with charging stations, and they went into the amount, it's going to be, it's millions, but that's what they're doing. These are more advantaged towns than Wallingford, Glastonbury, Farmington, Westport, New Milford, Greenwich. I mean, those are some of the things, and they've already gone through their, they don't, some of these don't have councils, some of them have representative town councils, they have selectmen, they've already gone through the process, had their public meetings. I mean, Meriden is looking to buy a fire truck. So there's lots of things. I'm not saying don't help the business, but you got over $13 million here. This is the opportunity for Wallingford and for you, Mr. Mayor, to really leave your mark on the town. There are many things that you can do. You can do all the parks over, you can put some parking lots, you've talked about doing the Center Street parking lots. Well, here's your opportunity, here's your money, and it falls right into the doing it.
Well, you're right. We could spend it all on governmental projects and completely ignore people in the private sector who this was basically drafted, money appropriated for, who deserve help. We need to have a sense of how many people out there need help. Just the number of businesses that suffered. Now, though, business may not continue, but the individual could need assistance.
That's, that's-
The number of landlords who have not been receiving any rent. I mean, the list goes on and on and on, and we shouldn't ignore them.
That opens a can of worms, Mr. Mayor. If you're saying that landlords haven't received rent, then why haven't they gone to the state of Connecticut that has a renters assistance fund that's sitting up there with tens of millions of dollars that has been asked to be used? Wouldn't you require on the application for landlords, and I'm a landlord, that if there weren't, you, you would need to go to the state first to get your money before you take it from the town? I mean, these are things-
No, these are, these are options. It doesn't depend upon you doing it. If you did receive assistance and aid from another source, then that would not be a loss. But if you were not able to get assistance, and I know of people at a hard time, some of whom never received unemployment, because you couldn't get through in the state system. I know my office helped several people. You couldn't get through. Once you were locked out, you could not get in and you couldn't reach anyone at the state. No one answered a phone. So these people we should forget because they could have gotten it from the state? No, sir. We're not going to forget them. If they weren't rendered aid, we are here to help them.
So, and I'm just using hypothetical because, and I'm not saying you shouldn't help a person that needs money, and I've never said that all this 13-plus million dollars should go to the town. You, there's many ways that you can spread this out over municipal and private citizens, but you do remember, anything you spend on the town and enhance the park, parking lots, et cetera, does help citizens in the town. But you're saying that if somebody was unable to collect unemployment, I mean, this is, you're going to, you're going to be in a gray area here, because I know what you're talking about, but I also know people who were on, couldn't collect unemployment because they were paid under the table. So I mean, there's, if you don't pay your taxes, you have, it's a two-way street. To get your benefits, you had to put into the system. If you don't put into the system, you don't get anything out of it. And this is why you're going to be in a gray area where you're going to make those decisions. It's tough.
We are going to make the decisions that are authorized under the Act, which is why we are asking for professional help in making balanced, good, justifiable decisions. But I think that is where the real harm, economic harm of COVID has occurred. It's occurred in our economy, in the people who work places who could not get employment. That is where the harm was, and it needs to be addressed.
You're, and, okay, so if that's your philosophy-
Can I just interrupt you for a second? You're at like eight minutes, and is there anybody else here for public question and answer? All right, carry on, Mr. Gross.
So if that's what you want to do is help, and I understand helping the people that are disadvantaged through the program, through COVID, why is it taking so long then? Other communities have already expended money.
I can't speak for other communities, but I know one of the big requirements in that Act is reporting. Whatever government spends, it's going to have to be dealing with audits, it's going to have to have an audit trail. Over a series of years you're spending the money, Treasury Department is going to want an audit. And as far as I'm concerned, that is a prerequisite for the town of Wallingford to spend any of it. We are not going to be caught without the appropriate justifications, no audit trail, and then have the government say, "We want the money back." I don't know what other towns are doing.
So are you saying that, I was told that you have a grant writer, you do have a controller, and I assume there's other people in his office, to administer, say, $2 million of the $13 million that's coming to Wallingford's way, you couldn't start and these people couldn't handle? The grant writer and the, the accounting department or the finance department couldn't handle?
I could let Mr. Senna speak for himself, and if he wants to, he can. He reviewed this, and he felt overwhelmed by what was being required.
Not saying it's only him, there's, he's other people, plus there's a grant writer that we have supposedly.
Right now, in the accounting office, we're about half staff. So until we get fully up to staff, there would be no way we could take this on without help.
And, okay, I mean, and that's, you lost these employees just this, I know the treasurer, you haven't had one for four-plus years, but other people you haven't had for how long? I mean, Boz I know just left. He left maybe six, eight months ago.
I'm down two payroll clerks. I'm down an apprentice accountant. I'm down the treasurer, and I'm now down the deputy comptroller.
And not to you, but to the Mayor, are you applying, putting applications out for all these jobs? And, because the only reason I say that is I saw they were looking for employee for one of the departments in town here, I think it's taxes. But the pay was $13 an hour. I mean, Amazon's paying 18 to 20 now. You're not competitive in a workforce that is very narrow. It's going to be tough for you to find clerks if you're not, if we don't pay.
The flyer you see is for part-time seasonal help in January during the collection season.
Okay. It didn't say that on there. It said, it said eight to five, or nine to five, whatever it was. So, Mr. Mayor, do you have any idea when you think, are you going to get input from anybody else on the ARPA money except, are you going to make the decisions with this consultant? Are you going to invite, you have nine counts, nine elected officials? Well, seven of them, I guess, eight of them.
Mr. Gross, you, you've been to enough meetings. You know administratively, no money can be spent without the council to approve it. But our job is to see that there's an administrative process that is understandable and that the information can properly, properly be presented in a public forum to have judgments made about what should be spent and what shouldn't. That's what we're endeavoring to do, to understand how to put this together in a way that then can be part of a process. There'll be a committee that deals with getting applications, reviewing them, making decisions. If members of the council want to sit on the committee, it's fine with me, but we need a committee dealing with that. It's probably going to be daytime work, receive applications, review them, dot the i's, cross the t's, and we'll move through the business. But that's what needs to be set up.
So you haven't had any meetings or anything to do with setting up any of this process at this point, except looking for a consultant?
I hesitate to set up a process before we have the, the help, the assistance, the direction from a professional who knows what we need to be able to function properly.
I mean, if you're, what you're asking for in money for businesses, what you know is in there.
I haven't asked for any money yet.
No, no, I didn't say that. But if you're, that's what you're saying you're looking for, that's what, you know, that's where you want your first tranche of money to go to. If you wanted to go in that way, towns such as Roxbury and Essex and these small communities, they're already done. They've already approved where they're spending the money. So I'm-
And I don't know what process they used.
Well, I could, I could-
But if they, if they spent it all on government projects, and that's the judgment they wanted to make, God bless them, that's the judgment for that community. I don't think that's the proper judgment for this money, for the purposes that it was appropriated by the federal government. I don't think that's proper.
Well-
I think we need to deal with the citizens and the small businesses that suffered under all the closings and now are still suffering. So money was made available. We need to see that they have a chance to be made whole. Now, if no one applies, so be it. But if we have many, many of them applying, I would hate to say, "Oh, well, sorry, we're going to save half of this money for government projects, so we'll have to cut it off here." You're not going to be able to get any money.
You, and I, and this is not a hypothetical. There's $13 million. Do you think the small businesses in town had an economic loss of $13 million?
I don't think, I, I don't know how to quantify it right now. I know there, there's been a lot of people who were hurt by-
No question.
And the economy is still suffering. So to what degree, that is individuals, to what degree it's businesses? You know, I was visited by someone with a business in town. The business made something like several million dollars a year. They went down to basically nothing. They're still in business. Do you think they'll have a claim? I suspect they will have a claim. How much it will be, I don't know. If they received other aid, that's going to have to be revealed. Certainly, we probably have clawback provisions. If it turns out they, they are, would be receiving money they shouldn't receive, then we'll have to have a right to get the money back. But we need an audit trail. We need to go through all of these details. If other towns have done, done it much shorter, shorter period of time, God bless them. I don't know how they did it, but all I know is what the assignment is here, and I think we should do it in a professional, a very deliberate, and obviously ultimately, all parties involved.
I'll be, can we wrap this up?
Yeah.
We spent quite a bit of time on this one topic.
It's very important. This is an opportunity for the-
It's not unimportant at all. That's not my point.
I mean, this is the, and the Mayor is-
This is your debate with the Mayor, but it's not getting resolved by-
Well, but I, hopefully the council hears it, and hopefully we'll talk to the Mayor because he said he'll propose these options to the council. They have to approve them.
Counselor Testa had put this on an agenda. This has been discussed by the council.
Correct, but not to the extent where the Mayor is still saying that he has the say in it, and the council should be able, in that realm, with him- We're going in circles. Can we just move on?
Yep.
Okay.
That's where I'm headed. Thank you.
Another question, then?
Make it brief.
A few months ago, or the police chief, I think it was, I don't know if it was Counselor Zandry or Testa, they brought the police chief in front here for Facebook. Has the town, has the police department done Facebook? I don't do Facebook. Has the town done it?
The police department was going to proceed with updating our website with all of the appropriate information and capabilities, and I, I don't know what has happened since on that project.
So, no, the question was, they were asking about Facebook. I think the police chief was agreeing to it, I think if I remember correctly at the meeting. Are they going to have a Facebook page or Instagram or whatever the new thing is?
It probably is not going to be Facebook, and they're satisfied as long as they have a better site in order to be able to get their message out in a more appropriate way. So it, he wasn't anxious for one vehicle versus another, and certainly a .gov site. Everyone knows that that is the site for government. You go on Facebook and you can find two or three sites that call themselves Wallingford Police Department. None of them are the Wallingford Police Department. That's a lot of misinformation, and to have our police department in the midst of a, a swimming, swimming pool full of other, other fish, all calling them Wallingford Police Department, is not helpful.
Okay, I, I figure, I know, I know you probably don't do Facebook or Instagram or any of those, but many towns across the state do have police presence and other presence on Facebook or Instagram or TikTok or whatever they are. It would be nice to see Wallingford do it also, and you would get the younger people also to pay attention. Thank you.
All right. We'll close the public question and answer period. Onto item six, which is the 2021 unallocated surplus of $969,336 to the Board of Ed's 2% Fund.
Good evening. We start?
Please.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Danielle Bellizzi, Superintendent, Wallingford Public Schools.
Dominic Barone, Business Manager. Thanks for having us. We're here to request a transfer into the 2% account of $969,336. At the end of the last fiscal year, we had, we had a surplus of 1.34, $1,342,402, and we are requesting of that $969,336 be transferred into the 2% Fund for us to do certain non-recurring type projects and, and different purchases.
So how did you come up with this dollar amount?
We had, well, two ways. We have a list of projects and items we wanted to accomplish, and also we, we know that the town's revenue was impacted based on our excess cost grant, and so we wanted to leave about the same amount of money that the, the revenue was impacted to return that to, to the town. And, and the reason it's, it was impacted is when we filed for excess cost in 1920, we filed it before everything shut down, so we had extra, we had, well, at the time, we, we anticipated certain costs that didn't occur, primarily transportation, because we shut everything down that year. The way the state works, it is the following year, they impact one of your grants, and I forget which one. I think it's the ECS grant. Mr. Senna would know for sure, but, so, you know, we, we, we wanted to return that piece of it, and then we lined up certain types of projects that we wanted to accomplish, and that's where we came up with our 969 and change.
Okay. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. There's about $3 million in that account now, right?
My calculation is there's 2.683 million currently in that account.
Yeah, which is about $3 million, right?
Well, say, yeah.
So I guess it begs the question, you've got earmarked projects, you've had money to do those projects. Why didn't you utilize the money that's in the account to do those projects that now you're projecting to take this money to expend?
So we have, I'll break down that 2.683 or 3 million. We have about $435,000 in projects that are in process or, you know, need to be bid, or one we can't do till the summer. And then we also had set aside, we had set aside $647,000 for special ed that we set aside probably five years ago. That's in that balance. And then, as you, as you folks know, we came last year when we had the, our initial projections were a very large deficit. We set aside 1.6 million, to be exact, 1.6853 dollars. So we had set that aside for COVID-related expenses. And, you know, our, our, you know, our hope is to leave those set asides currently and to, you know, continue with doing the projects we have scheduled, and, and then additionally, continue 969,000 of additional projects. Some of them are related to projects that are ongoing already that we, that we started and need additional funds for, and some are projects, one of them being an energy efficiency project that we have in the budget this year. It was a $300,000, roughly $300,000 project, and we had $100,000 in our operating budget, and then we wanted to use $200,000 of this surplus to, to continue that.
Right. So I don't know if anybody thinks that that is an answer, but to the, if you already have the money, so let me ask it a different way. If this is not approved tonight, do you have the money to do those projects that are on your punch list under the existing funds that are in the account?
We, we would go back to the board, see if they wanted to use some of the set aside money to do those projects.
Okay, so the set aside-
The answer is, is if there's more than 969,000 there to-
Significantly, yeah. The set aside is arbitrary, though. I mean, it's, it's, it's in one account, it's really not appropriate. I mean, you have projects that you said you're going to do, you haven't bid, so I, I understand that's earmarked, right? It's what, 435,000? Okay. So I, I can put that aside. But you still got over $2 million in there that it appears is unencumbered, unassigned. So I'm just concerned about stockpiling here. So I look forward to other questions, but I'm just being upfront here.
It, it's, it's a unique situation that we haven't had in the past, that we've actually been able to do a lot of projects, you know, over the last few years, primarily when the schools are shut down, but-
But you could have said, "We're going to give this money back," right? Because that's where it goes, to the general fund.
Correct.
And said, "We can get these projects done for our education process." That was a choice, and I'm just trying to figure out, you know, we're down the other road. Why would I support this? So I thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So let's focus on the, on the 1.6 million set aside for the COVID expenses. What, what's the plan for that money?
The plan is to keep it in case we need it, you know, if things spike up and we have to make adjustments, and, and that's what the plan would be for that money.
So, and I guess I could share some of the same concerns that Craig does, right? So like maybe 15 years ago, the board was in the process of they would buy like school supplies for the following year out of this year's budget, right? And then eventually, that kind of came to a head at one point when there wasn't enough funds to do everything, right? So they spent all the money like in, in advance, and then when the current year came, they didn't have enough money to settle that year, and we ended up in a year with layoffs and so on and so forth. So I think the function of not setting, having the board not set aside money is you, sort of the, the council and the town can track what it is that the board's spending money on. So you always sort of have an idea, you know, that everything is, is where it's supposed to be. I'm just concerned about the, you know, you already have 2.7 million in there, so I'm just concerned about the precedent of now setting aside additional money in there that you, that you don't intend to spend, and, and I think it's easy to lose accountability of that. You know, and I think the Board of Ed by and large does a great job with the money, you know, but, but I think we're setting ourselves up for potentially a, a future issue with it. Because from my perspective, if you have that kind of money set aside, then the 2.7 should come off of your next year's budget allocation, you know, or the town at least should reduce it, you know, because I can't imagine anyone on the board or the council side is going to be talking about tax increases next year because it's been, you know, by and large, great for government with so many unfilled positions and whatnot. So let's focus on that for a second. How many unfilled positions do you have at the Board of Ed, like ballpark, right now?
Yeah, sorry. So certified positions, I think we have about four or five that we're starting, we're looking to fill. Again, it's revolving because we have retirements mid-year, resignations mid-year, and then we have a handful of certified, non-certified, excuse me. So probably another 10 non-certified positions.
Okay. Okay, so that's, so, so the four certified positions, do you anticipate filling those by, before the end of the school year? Is that the plan, is to fill them ASAP?
Yes, it is the plan to fill them.
Okay. So I guess, I guess I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I guess first of all, I, I think it would have been helpful if we saw the list beforehand of what, what you're planning on spending the money on, but I, I think what I'm hearing now is that you, you're not planning on spending it. Is that, is that correct? Or?
No, well, I think that we, we had talked about some set aside money that's already in the 2%. the 2% fund, that we, you know, of that 430,000 of it, we're planning on spending, the rest has been set aside for two different things. We, the, we're asking for another, for 969,000 of, from this surplus of last year, and I, in the past, I hadn't handed out a list, but I can give you an idea what's on that list, if that would help. So one of the first items is, and a lot of these we've discussed at our meetings, and all of these have come out of like either our strategic plan, or they've come out of where we've identified a need, you know, some refrigerators we had problems with at schools. So we have an energy efficiency study that we need 200,000, I'm rounding these numbers, but 200,004. We have 100,000 in our, in our operating budgets, a $300,000 project. We have some ball field design at both DAG and Lyman Hall, and that's 120 between the two of them. Wall pads at a gymnasium of 30,000, 168,000 on security vestibules at 10 of the schools. We started that project. We have about 33,000 left in the 2% fund. That's this, the request of 168 is net that, so we're assuming we're going to use 30,000, 33,000 out of there. We have some assistive technology that we need for our special needs student, $25,000. Classroom projection systems replacements at all the schools, that's 120,000. Cafeteria equipment for 23,000, and that ranges from refrigerators to small wares to thermocuplers, which I hope you don't ask me what they are, because I'm not quite sure.
It's okay.
My understanding is we need them. I think they, I don't, actually, I'm not going to even say. And then additionally, we have a laptop refresh for 50,000 and some breakfast carts, and these, 35,000 for all the middle schools, the elementary schools, the high schools already do breakfast. These are nice carts to let us, you know, serve out of them, grab and go. And then others, student replacement computers, 79,000. That's essentially the 969,000 we're asking for.
Okay, perfect. That's helpful. So I mean, all, you know, all valid, valid items, it sounds like. So I guess then my question is, if we, if you did not get this money, how would you go about funding those items? Would you budget for them again next year, or would you take it from the 2.7 that's already sitting there?
I think we'd have to go back to the Board of Ed to decide that. We, I don't believe we would make that decision.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm having, like I said, while those all seem like valid expenditures, it sounds like there's already, you know, 2.7 sitting there, and I'm just concerned that, you know, $900,000, I was looking at last year's budget, and to reduce the taxes, we ended up needing 1.8. And then we're looking tonight to some other departments, I think, later on, and it looks like the police department might have 900,000. So you put the 900,000 from here, the 900,000 from police, there's our 1.8 that could reduce taxes. And so I also just wanted to bring up, just in case any members of the public weren't aware, my understanding of how this works, so, and I did clarify with the comm. controller earlier today, the, any other departments in town don't have this, this is because of a state statute that the Board of Ed is able to keep, potentially keep part of its surplus. So if it was any other department, the money would go back to the general fund, and then we can either give it back in the form of, you know, reducing taxes the next year, or however the town decides to spend the general fund. But the Board of Ed has given the opportunity to keep up to 2% of their surplus. So just so everyone understands, the Board of Ed works a little bit differently, which is, which is why you're here tonight. So in a normal circumstance, any other town department, this money would be going right back to the general fund, which could then go back to the taxpayers. So I think that's just why it sounds like a few of us are maybe trying to figure out what we want to do, because if the, if the projects can be funded without you getting this extra 900,000, and we can still give the 900,000 back to the taxpayers, maybe everybody can be happy and we can still get those, those items purchased. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So in that laundry list of everything that I heard, I didn't hear anything about transportation. I'd like to find out what we're doing about the transportation situation with the school system and the busing. And you guys, you know I've called about it.
So, I mean, this list is for nonrecurring items. I mean, if we were going to bring transportation in-house, we might be looking at purchasing vehicles, but, you know, that's why it wasn't in this list. It's, you know, and it wouldn't, I don't know that money would solve the transportation issue right now, but if it did, you know, I don't think we'd be looking to do it out of 2% unless we were buying equipment for transportation.
And that's fair enough. I mean, and I.
Just, that's why you didn't hear transportation.
Right, no, and I appreciate the fact that you're looking at one-time costs, because that's really what this money should be for. I also want to make sure that I understand what the 2% fund is. Is this 2% in totality or 2% every year?
I believe it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Senna, but I believe it's 2% of the budget for this year, every year.
So if, if, just to make it a nice round number, if your budget was $100 million, you could move 2 million of it into this fund every single year, if it was available to move?
Regardless of the balance in that fund, is I think, is that correct?
That's my understanding of it.
Yeah, that, all right. And I only bring that up so that, again, for a little bit more clarity for the other folks. This is not a, you know, because some people might be doing the math, well, gee, at 2.7, we're already over 2%. This could be done every single year. And I'm not suggesting that you are doing it or that you're budgeting it intentionally to do so, but I want, I want the folks to understand, and all of us up here to understand, that this could be a $10 million account someday, depending on how it's done and how it's, you know, how it goes. When you talked about the four or five certified positions that are not filled and the 10 non-certified positions that are not filled, I'm going to ask, these were ones that were part of the budget that we passed, the money that you got, and they just haven't been filled since the start of the budget? Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, it is.
So for the four or five certified positions, what would be the, an average of the salaries? Would be 50,000 a year, 60,000 a year? If they were, if, I'm basically looking at, this is money you haven't spent, and you might not spend until half the budget's gone, and this is actually going to dovetail into a conversation that we're going to have on another item a little bit later. If they're, just for the sake of me spitball, and if it's $75,000 salary times four, that's $300,000 at half a year, it's 150,000 in salaries you haven't spent. That's also cushion that you could use for some of these projects if we voted no on moving this money over. Because you've already been budgeted this money, and half the year will go and it won't be spent. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, I think it would be. I mean, we still have to make sure we have someone in those positions, so it probably wouldn't be that full amount, because we'd still be paying someone to be in those positions.
Right, once you, right, once you hire them, and if you don't hire them until January, then you're only paying them for, remember, our budget ends on June 30th. So that would be January's halfway point. So for the, if you budget 500,000 for salaries and hire a handful of people for half a year, there's $250,000 unspent. That will be another big bucket that gets rolled up into future funds that go into the 2% fund. So I want, I want us to be looking at this as well, because I look at it like, again, we're going to have this conversation, I think it's on item seven, for the 30 unfilled positions we've got here on the municipal side. It's, it's, it's a big bucket of cash, and my concern is, we've got other issues in town that need addressing, $100,000 of overspend that we need for a parking lot that's never going to get paid. This money could be coming out of that. And then the other item is, anytime that we set budgets for the Board of Ed, if we raise an amount, then what happens is that becomes a new threshold. So we can never reduce you guys below it, even if you guys come up with all the cost savings. We can't give you less a following year. We have to give you at least that amount or more. So if there's this fund to consume, we might have a future budget come up, and we might want to say, look, we only want to bring you up to the same thing as last year. To keep us with ongoing services, we really need last year's plus X. All right, consume some of that 2% fund this year, so we've got a little bit of a cushion. That, that's my concern. My concern is, the budget comes before us, we do some massaging up here, then we get into a dogfight, and for two years, we have veto override, because we're taxing the citizens and the businesses in the town, and then there are certain services that are not getting committed. And if there are four or five certified positions in 10 not certified, that's a service that we budgeted and taxed everybody on that can't be getting met. Four or five people not doing a job, there's only so many other people around that can do double duty or backfill. So that, that's where I'm very concerned about where we are today with this. So I'm going to kind of stop right there, and I, that's, and I'm going to be interested in the other questions that come up too, but I have a lot of concern about this, because as it's been pointed out, not that you're a department, you're a very big piece of our budget, and it's not as simple as saying, gee, you know, the Board of Education budget is a department, but it's, because it's not, it's much, much larger than that. But you have a unique benefit where you guys can roll this stuff over, where no other, we have to, we have to buy half a fire truck or half a plow truck for other departments when we want to do this stuff. So I, I appreciate your responses, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have concerns. And to give a little history to those, so two budgets ago, I had the very unpopular and not supported idea of reducing the Board of Ed budget by, I was like 600, 700,000 dollars or something. I was trying to cut a million dollars, and I felt, Board of Ed is two-thirds of the town budget, let's take two-thirds from there, the other third from the town, nobody else want to do it, it's fine. At that time, the Board of Ed had a, I'm using rough numbers off the top of my head, 1.3 million something, after having just spent 700,000 on pre-bought or one-time expenses upfront, or committing to those. My, my discussion with Dr. Menzo at the time, and he agreed, that it was a likelihood or a possibility was that, that COVID money would be coming in from the federal government, blah, 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 and sure enough, that's, that's what happened, and there ended up being a large surplus. So I went into this meeting last year thinking like, all right, I'm not giving the money back. Dr. Menzo was very stressed, worried about cash flow issues, I figured it's fine. So I supported depositing that money. So here we are, still with that money set aside, which I guess is great. I, again, I floated it less publicly this last time, I just have a problem increasing a surplusing budget. And I get there is a margin, like 1%, that's great. I mean, how, you can't get it closer than that predicting it, but we've got a stockpile. So, and I don't like to tell the Board of Ed what to do or micromanage, but there's a checks and a balance. And, and I, as I asked two years ago, and again, I think last year, of Mr. Bose, that we can, we can give you more money during the year, if there ends up being a problem with COVID expenses. So where I sit right now, my recommendation or my thoughts are, would that, I would not be supportive of this. I would recommend using the 1.6 that you have set aside for COVID, and if real COVID expenses come later on, we can address them, but as it stands right now, almost a million dollars, I would be more comfortable letting it go this time. So, thank you.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I want to remember Counselor Laffin's last statement, that if you need something down the road, we can talk about it then, that just goes, I don't want to forget that, because that is at the, basically, it's at the crux of how this thing, whole thing evolved. First of all, keep in mind that we, you know, I understand that the Board, you know, we have responsibility for all of the money of the town, but the Board of Education has the unique responsibility of managing their money. We don't have the authority, nor do we have the wherewithal or experience or anything else to tell them how to spend their money. We can only be assured by them, to the best of their ability, that what we eventually give them to work with is needed and will be managed appropriately and decently and honestly and so forth. Every time we start talking budgets and we start questioning, well, wait a minute, what are you going to spend that money on? I mean, explain to me, what, that's when you've gone too far. When you talk about where the money's going specifically, you're getting out of your lane. It's not your job. Now, they tell us where it's all going, not so that we could say, I approve. They tell us where it's going so that we can say, thank you, it's not going to the casino. That's what we worry about. Are you managing the money reasonably, responsibly, according to your fiduciary duty? We all know that if a budget pops up, I mean, a surplus occurs, they're nice when we see them, that means people are budgeted tight, they've done all they can to try to restrain expenses, and we would be furious if anybody ran a deficit. And that has all sorts of horrible implications, especially for these folks, our Board of Ed members, not them, Board of Ed members are on the hook personally for deficits. But, so we want to make sure that we're managing the money well, and when a surplus comes up, you could do a number of things with it. You can always say, let's, oh, let's give it back to the taxpayers. Well, you know what? It's a lot easier when it's their money for the school system. I have yet to see anybody say, let's, let's give refunds on the surpluses that the town generates. We talk about it, but we don't do it. We find ways to use it, and that's cool, and that's responsible. But we don't say, oh, the town has an extra $2 million, let's send the check back to every taxpayer. It doesn't happen. We try to find a way to utilize that money on expenses we know we're going to have anyway, in ways that can try to reduce the future tax burden. Well, this is what they're doing. Everything the Board of Ed wants to spend their money on is something that they need to spend their money on, but each year, they prioritize, and a certain number of things can't be done that year. Well, by the end of the year, if there's a surplus, then they're able to pull back and say, okay, now maybe we can go do those three, four, five things that were at the top of our list. Maybe we could do them now, instead of putting them in next year's budget and asking for more money from the town, and so on. My point is, it's all, no one is taking surplus money and deciding to do crazy new things that we don't believe in or we don't trust. They're all expenditures that are in the grand master plan, and if we can utilize them with money that we've already collected taxes on, then that will save down the road, because they won't be asking for it again. Now, the idea that, why did this all come about? Many years ago, there were questions that came up, what do we do with the board surplus? Well, you know, if they give it back to the town, like the charter says and the state says, you know, can you trust them to give it back to them next year when they ask for it again for the things they weren't able to buy? And everybody wanted to say, sure, we will, but nobody was comfortable with that, so they started doing a little pre-buy. They said, hey, you know what? We have $500,000 worth of pencils to buy for next year, let's use our surplus this year to buy those things. And that worked for a long time, because, why? Because there was openness, there was transparency. They told us exactly what they were doing. Somewhere along the way, some people had ruffled their feathers, I don't like this, I don't know, maybe at some point it was politically expedient to say it showed irresponsible budgeting. The bottom line was, it was always being spent on educational needs. So when you spent it, how you spent it, was more a matter of a determination of a, the development of a process that showed trust. So when this 2% fund possibility arose, they said, well, let's go that route. That way, we don't say, what do we do with the surplus? Give it back to the town, and then just give the town back a budget request next year, and they'll give it back to us. Well, will they? Will they? So just like the pre-bys were done, the council, in a So just like the pre-buys were done, the council, in a manner of trust, said, okay, we're going to let you establish this fund because we know that whatever you're doing with the money, you're going to tell us. Even the concept of this thing could develop into a $5, $10 million fund, as Counselors Angie pointed out. The possibility is there, but you really think that would happen? You really think after one or two years that we all of a sudden saw that the fund is building? That we wouldn't now start putting the brakes on? The only reason we're nervous about the fund building is because there's this $1.6 million, and I'm going to call it a fear fund because they just went through two years of COVID getting slapped with unexpected expenses. And they said, you know what? Give us another year of cushion because we don't know what the hell is going to happen. We may go out of school again. But next year, within the next year after that, things will balance out. And you'll be able to say, and they're going to be able to say to us, we never used that 1.6 on COVID emergencies unanticipated. So let's balance this thing out. We're not going to come back to you for a request to put $2 more million into the surplus, the 2% fund, or so on and so forth. What I'm getting at is, there's a, there is, there always has been, and I really believe there should be, an exercise where we are trusting one another to utilize this money the way it should be, it's anticipated to be used. And if we go a couple of years where we see that, yeah, no, it's not happening that way, then we can make some decisions. But I think it's premature to show that kind of cynicism and play hardball this year, given the circumstances we're in. That was lengthy, but I feel really strongly about this. Thank you.
So I was just talking with Counselor Laffin and Counselor Fishbein about the history of how this came before us. So there was a statute that passed the state legislature. I want to say it was 2014, give or take. And initially, it came before us as a 1% fund. And then a couple of years later, the statute was amended and it became a 2% fund. So Connecticut Legislature created this opportunity for you to have these surpluses. You don't come before us much with respect to budgetary stuff because we approve your gross budget when we approve the town's budget as part of our process. So I don't think we're nitpicking if you come before us looking to keep over $900,000 to find out what you're going to spend the money on. It's an opportunity that we have to get into these weeds and I don't think you were offended by any of our questions. So, thank you. Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a procedural question. Absent this whole discussion, let's just pretend this wasn't even an issue. And let's say in the middle of the fiscal year, you guys needed a million dollars to do something that you didn't know about, you had to do it. Would that have to go through the mayor or would you come to us directly? Like, does the mayor have to approve that, just like the mayor would approve? Like, if the police needed an extra million dollars that wasn't in, like, how would that procedurally work?
They would have to come administrative and would follow the route of, like, anything else.
So in theory, you could, so in theory, then you could say, you could look at their need just in this hypothetical and say, I don't, you guys can wait till the next budget year. Or you could say, yeah, you really need this money. Like, it's up, basically, it's up to you then, it's up to the mayor.
Well, it would be certainly a critical part of that process, or whoever's the mayor, right?
Understood. No, because we keep saying, I think the straw man that keeps getting thrown out is, well, you can always come back to us. Well, it's not as simple as just all, I mean, not that it's, you know, it's just, it's a process. It's no different than any other department head coming back mid-year. So I just, that's, okay, I just want to thank you for that clarification. So I went to Holy Cross, it's a Jesuit college. And they say one of the hallmarks of a Jesuit education is you can argue both sides of an issue and nobody knows where you actually stand. So I'm going to argue both sides of this issue because I'm not really, and I'm not really sure where I stand. I'm just saying to everybody. On the one hand, I think that your budget, I don't think, I know from at least a year ago when I did the analysis, your budget, and you taught me this, is the closest actual to budget of any of the town departments. And the reason is you have a massive budget. So if you're, as Counselor Laffin said, I mean, yeah, you know, if you come in at 1%, that 1% is a lot, it's a lot, it's a million dollars. But if you look at all the budgets in town, and this isn't a knock on anyone else's budget either, but the Board of Ed is the leanest budget. I challenge people to look at your budget by object code and tell me where you would cut. So that's just, that's just that side of it. On the other hand, you guys are rolling in money. Not just this money, but you get CRA money from the mayor. You've gotten bonding from the mayor and capital projects. I think Mr. Bose had told me, it was something, it was up to like $11 or $12 million over the course of the last seven or eight years. That's all, it's what we, it's what we have a credit rating for, a great credit rating for. But you do get all that money for the big, and so that was taken, in fact, I was on the Board of Ed with Counselor Marone when that was taken out of the budget, the operating budget. So that was a big, that was a big win for everyone. But that is money that you get that nobody really, I think, remembers, that you remember. But I'm saying people in the public. So there's that. You know, I think philosophically, then I have two philosophical competing issues. You know, on the one hand, I agree with Counselor Laffin about, you know, the notion of, you have a surplus already and that's kind of the position from which we're making this decision. But, you know, I would also argue, again, Public Works and Police have way bigger surpluses relative to their budgets every year than you guys do. And nobody up here says a thing. So I feel like you're being held to a different standard. On the other hand, I get emails from PTOs. And I say this every year at this meeting. And, you know, we need money for field day and for teacher gifts, totally cool. And then I get, then I get the bottom, and teacher supplies. And I'm just like, how does the Board of Ed with $107 million, but why does any teacher in Wallingford need money for supplies? Like, like, cut a million off that and just give it out to teachers and say, you go buy your pens and your pencils and your dry erase markers. So I mean, that's what, that one really gets at me when I see that, that money, you know, that teachers are, no teacher should pay out of their pocket for supplies, not in this town. That's just my, my perspective as a parent. So I can see it both ways. And I don't, I don't know. I, I'm going to wait and see what everyone else says. But thank you for all you do. No questions, just be bloviating. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Morgenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Is that on? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the two things that I cut to the chase, and I'm kind of like Chris, you can really take this both ways. So on the one hand, the state mandates that we can never make your budget lower. And on the other hand, I met many times with Sal Menzo about how well you guys plan ahead and project and so much better, in my opinion, than the government side of things that you know so many years out where things are going to go. This money, although you from the business side have some list, but not everything, this money will be spent. You are not sitting around here going, you know, gee, I don't know, but I'm going to make sure I spend it on 500 pencils. There is more than enough. I would like to hear from Danielle, our new superintendent. I'm sure you have a plan. I'm sure you have a philosophy of where you see our buildings, not renovate, not that whole big thing, but the small, what we have to deal with of our newest building 50 years old and infrastructure of these and upcoming things that are the state of education now that we need to, in all likelihood, catch up with. I would expect that you have this coming year, two to three years, five years. There is plans for our schools. This isn't just, yeah, can we, you know, juggle things?
Agreed. And so we do have plans far out. I think when we look at our schools where we are right now, aside from what you had mentioned, whether it's renovate, build, all of those pieces, there are things that need to be looked at and to be fixed. And so I think when we look at the items that we put, for example, on this list, there are a lot of things here that we feel are, obviously, all of them very beneficial. And it's for the safety of our students and our staff. When I think about all the vestibule pieces that we have, those are critical. We've started it in some of our schools. It's been very successful. It's a piece for when people walk in. It's something that, you know, we all believe in and we want to keep our students safe and our staff safe with that. So we've included that, the efficiency studies. All of those, these pieces here are to maintain what we have and to continue to grow and to keep up with what's happening, irregardless of what happens next in terms of the high schools or other pieces that have been discussed in years past. So for us, we do have a plan looking at all of the components that go with the school. And so for us, agreed, we are always making sure we have a list of everything and we're transparent and we're very clear as to where we want to spend it and how we want to spend it. And so we have that looking out for years to come.
And this is your money. And on some level, you know, Mr. Testa said it best. We trust you and the Board of Ed to know how to spend this money. And it's our job to make sure you keep that money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So Councilman Laffin was talking about the money stockpile. And I think for me, that's sort of the, that's sort of my greatest concern. Because I think on the, on the town side, as some of my fellow counselors have alluded to before, we have some pretty exceptionally large budgets or large surpluses in some certain town departments. But that being said, I guess if we don't give you the 1%, the 2%, then it sort of encourages you to spend in a way that's irresponsible next year in an effort to not repeat this exercise. So I guess despite my earlier comments, I guess I'm more in favor of this idea than against it. I think the issue for me is there has to be a ceiling to the amount of money that we could expect the Board of Ed to have, you know, in a potential rainy day fund. So I'm not sure what that amount is, but 2.7 million seems like you're getting towards the ceiling of that, you know, of that amount. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to address lanes and trust, quite frankly. They work hand in hand. We up here, holding the purse strings. I maintain a level of trust. But you know, Reagan said, trust but verify. I think part of that verification is where's the money going to go, right? So if you came to me and you said, you know, Meriden's having these outdoor classrooms, you know, because if something happens in the future, you know, COVID pandemic, they can, they can utilize that. They don't have to run around doing something else. They don't have to social distance, the masks that everybody's complaining about, some people, some people complaining about, you know, that kind of stuff, right? Then, you know, I could say, well, you know, that's maybe a good idea. A few years ago, Dr. Menzo came to us and said there was going to be a coffee shop on Center Street. We're going to teach kids about, you know, hands-on, how to operate, how to run a business, you know? Another great, another great thing. So, and I think us working hand in hand, us knowing about those projects says, you know, they got some money, but this is a good thing. But where we are financially with this, you know, we're not giving money back to the taxpayers. You know, I think whether the police have a surplus, it goes back to the general fund. Whether you have a surplus and it doesn't go to the 2% fund, it goes to the general fund, right? There's no concept here of, you know, writing checks to people. But, you know, ultimately, I think we all realize, with all due respect, it's not your money. It's the taxpayers' money, right? So, you know, the MBR is a problem because, you know, one who's a miser could say, you know, I gave you X last year. You had a surplus. I'm not giving you more this year. Deal with it. But we don't. Every year, there is some level of increase, right? And part of that increase is the trust but verify. We're going to do other stuff. You know, I'm concerned about capital projects, you know? And I guess I have a question. Are the baseball fields at Sheehan still flooding? Are you still having problems with that?
I believe they're addressing it, but I'm not sure. I believe.
I know that was, I know it was a major problem and I.
I thought it was fixed, but I don't know, I don't off the top of my head.
Okay. And I know, I don't want to catch you on the spot. But it's that kind of stuff, you know, when we're sitting on 2.7 million dollars and, you know, I'd like to know that stuff like that is addressed in our schools. You know, I know at times we've talked about air conditioning in some of our schools, you know, because it does get hot, May, June, right? I don't know how much it would cost. I'm not suggesting it, right? Throwing it out there just as a, as a concept. I just, trust but verify, and I do have a level of trust. But I, I just don't write checks without having some exchange. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I will note that there is no motion on the table with respect to this item. Would anybody care to move it?
I'll make a motion to move it.
Second.
So is the motion for the entire $969,336?
My Venmo is at CK Chertel. I get 10 grand. No, that is, the motion is for the full, whatever was on the agenda. Yes, what you said.
Okay. So moved by Counselor Chertel, seconded by Counselor Marone. Any further discussion on the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Would that be you, Mr. Gross?
That would be me. I was, you couldn't see me over there. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Just one quick question. Does the Board of Ed receive ARPA money?
Yes, we do.
And do you know about how much?
Look it up. Give me one second.
Sure.
I'm sorry, you brought it here. 4.5 million.
Total or each tranche?
No, over three years. That's, that's the total though. But it goes out three years.
All right. And I know there's a broad array of how that money can also be spent. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Counselor Tada, I saw a hand.
Yes, so now I have a question on that. Is that, I don't know if you would know or maybe the council knows. That 4.5 million, is that included in the general government or that's on top of the other ARP money?
That's completely separate from the, from ours.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Alexander Hens, 22 Wining Brook Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut, 06492. Does the fund for the, any of the special needs kids, is that chosen by the kids or by the Board of Ed? Do you certify where the money goes for the special needs?
Correct.
Okay. Are ethnical or any type of indigenous people who cannot maybe get literacy standards?
Ms. Bulleye, if you could just answer his question into the microphone, quite all right. Thank you.
If individual students who do not get a literacy acceptance because of speech or tongue deficiency, like dyslexia or if they're Arabic or Muslim, do they get a choice to be in said grant? Or do they get labeled as special need or different because of their tongue disorder or dyslexia?
No. So the, the grant funding that we have goes towards all of those students.
So it goes towards the indigenous?
Yes.
Are they made known of it? Or do they have to have a piece of paper saying that they are mentally challenged in school to receive part of the grant money or services through special needs?
No. So the grant funding, that's just one piece. So underneath the grant funding, there's multiple different layers of what we assigned. So it goes to all of our, all students benefit from it. And it just depends on how we allocate for staffing and additional needs throughout that.
Further questions? Allocating that, does there need to be a health concern known by a specific practitioner? That is like a normal physi, like a physician doctor or an MD or like if you're an adolescent physician, like saying that you're mentally challenged or something like that and you don't see necessarily a doctor because you have indigenous pasts and you don't use that practitioner? But then you, the Board of Ed, would not necessarily label us as special needs because we don't have the certification through the normal means of what it means to be special needs? Do you get to definitively stamp us as special needs or not?
No, so there's a process. So through the school system, there's a process for that. So if a child is struggling and we're providing support and they go through our SBI process, and then they go through the PPT process, which happens through the schools, then the testing happens within the schools if it's something for dyslexia or other needs. It's identified then, and then supports are provided. That's for all students.
Now, last question. Do we have for any of the schools, now is this just for Wallingford?
What we're talking about this evening is just.
Okay. Well, in dealing with that, is there correct guidances or availability for? or availability for those indigenous peoples at those said schools, say Native American, indigenous to immigration or any said that subculture to have the inlet-outlet ability to have multicultural communications for that barrier loss? If there is said something on that exemption form? Like say if you clarify it, is there someone at the school that they can talk to other than their guidance counselor or have a church political or political debate? Like a church facility?
Not at the school system. There's not a church facility at the school system. But we have supports, teachers, support staff, counselors, administrators. Students are welcome to talk to anyone they feel comfortable with.
So chaplains? Sorry for not finishing. Chaplains? Chaplains are able to be on present or no?
We do not have any currently.
Okay, so then that would then avoid then indigenous communications with political concerns or having a church and school section of education in that split gap? So technically what you're saying then null and voids you actually being able to have people talk and communicate with the school in a verbatim? Because you don't allow a chaplain or a priest to come on and they know they're Catholic. You set them to school standards.
I'm not saying we don't allow anyone on. If you're asking if I have them at the school system, I do not.
Do you have the availability for any type of chaperone chaplains or anything to be accessible?
I can certainly look into that.
Okay. And then further on, you said then the money too also, which there is a fund for, for just growth of the community, for just miscellaneous funds via the school, because it's a Board of Ed, which would be, let's say, education via partnership and then enforcement of medication? Correct?
No.
Drugs and alcohol? You don't do any money for fundraising for drugs and alcohol or parental discretion advised?
No.
No. So none of the COVID fund can be released in understanding more about the communication through doctor practicing and communication of indigenous people? And then the way we compare the two at home care and health and standards? Because you said the appliances would be for refrigerators. I don't think any of us know anything about refrigerators or any type of wiring to buy refrigerators for the schools.
So that would not come out of the grant funding?
Okay. No, but I'm just trying to get the understanding that Narcotics Anonymous and the Alcoholics Anonymous then is a partial, a partial fund that would go involved with the schools for like the mural on the back, like the projection screen? You do films for drugs, correct? Saying that drugs are bad?
Correct.
Okay, so then that technically would a subsidy program? And let's say if we put $500,000 or $400,000 into that and we used one video that cost $30, then the rest over money wouldn't get accounted for and then you guys would pocket it all, correct?
No, we don't pocket the money.
But if there's only one video that's used for $4 a video and you play the video once for 100 years and nothing is oversight or seen through the drug program that you put the money to, so the remainder money doesn't get collected by the Treasury, correct?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
I'm inclined to agree with you.
If there's a remainder, if you give-
Can you just get back to the subject matter of-
If there's $3 million-
You and I can't talk at the same time. So you are going to stop talking.
Okay, no, so there's no-
Can you please bring this back to the grant? To, I mean, to the reserve that we're talking about? All right. There's nothing else from the public. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Not this time, no.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Tada.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
No.
And Chairman Cervone.
I vote no. So the motion does not pass.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. On to item seven, which is to consider and approve an agreement between Eileen Stevens and Scott Stevens and the town of Wallingford for the purchase of a portion of 264 Williams Road, 95.2 acres, 281 acres for $750,000.
Mr. Chairman. We approve the agreement between Eileen Stevens and Scott Stevens and the town of Wallingford for the purchase of the portion of 264 Williams Road for $750,000.
Second. Seconded by Counselor Shortell. Mayor.
Yes, this is an important purchase for the community. And I just want to mention, we're certainly appreciative and thankful that the Stevens, Eileen and Scott were, are very interested in having this land be open space. A person who was very helpful in this whole process was Jim Piscati, member of the Conservation Commission, who acted as a conduit for information. And Jim was very helpful. Since then, there's been a number of people who've worked on this, including the Water Division through the General Manager Neil Amweek. And I think he can present the issues that they seek to address through providing the funds to purchase this. And ultimately, then the Conservation Commission can speak to some of the assets of the piece of property from their perspective. But important for the town and it's a good step forward.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Amweek, you have a presentation for us. Do we have to wait for it to warm up? It was working so well before the meeting started. All right. You're on.
Thank you. Good evening. Chairman Cervone would say for those in TV land, I am General Manager Neil Amweek, General Manager of the Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions. We do have a PowerPoint explaining the acquisition of a portion of 264 Williams Road, specifically parcel B, which is comprised of 95.281 acres. So just a quick presentation agenda. We will review the location, the benefits, the passive recreational activities, the acquisition costs and funding, the timeline, open space and watershed land acquisition grant. And then we will open it up for questions and discussion. So this is an aerial view of 264 Williams Road looking west at around the top right corner of the drone photograph. You can see Williams Road with the open space area. And so parcel A to be retained by the Stevens, the current owners, 13.157 acres. And parcel B to be acquired by the town of Wallingford is 95.281 acres. So here is a survey. And I know the AutoCAD drawing did not transfer too well. But to the left, you can see parcel A, which is the 13 plus or minus acres. And to the right is parcel B, which we'll be focusing on. This is of particular importance to the Wallingford Water Division because the Muddy River does traverse through the center of the parcel. This parcel is approximately 2,500 linear feet north of Mackenzie Reservoir or less than one half mile. And here is an open space map for the town of Wallingford. In the center, you can see the 264 Williams Road parcel. The, and if you have, if you can read the legend, you have better eyesight than I do. So I did bring a little cheat sheet. The light green, the lime green, whether it has red dots or not in front of it is current town of Wallingford open space. The pink towards 6 o'clock is land that the state of Connecticut has acquired the development rights for. And then the brown around 1 o'clock, 1:30 is-
It's private institutions, but it's open.
Yep. It's, it's private club or sportsman's organization. Thank you, Mayor. So what are the benefits of the town of Wallingford acquiring this parcel? So after acquisition, the entire parcel B will either be classified as Class 1 watershed land or Class 2 watershed land. The majority of the land, approximately 75%, will be classified as Class 1 watershed land. And as we just discussed, the Muddy River traverses through the middle of the subject property from north to south. That is a tributary to Mackenzie Reservoir. It is rated a Class AA water course by the state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. As a Class AA water course, these are surface waters designated for existing or proposed drinking water supplies. This map is probably my favorite map as prepared by the department, the Town and Jering Department. And it really does drive home where this parcel fits in the overall watershed protection district for the Wallingford Water Division. So the light gray is the watershed protection district for the Wallingford Water Division. And the darker gray to the bottom of the map is watershed for the South Central Regional Water Authority. Continuing on with the benefits. We've highlighted this before, but the tributary area to Mackenzie Reservoir counts for approximately 9, excuse me, 75% of the total watershed area, tributary to the four towns reservoirs. And the surface water supply provides approximately 94% of the public drinking water delivered daily to the 39,500 residents, businesses and visitors to the town. And the watershed associated with the Mackenzie Reservoir is critical for supplying the town with an adequate volume of potable water. And protection of the watershed is one of the Water Division's highest priorities. An acquisition of a portion of 264 Williams Road property will protect this undeveloped watershed area from environmental degradation and provide water quality purification in its expansive, open and forested areas. And protecting large natural areas on the eastern side of Wallingford is identified as a priority acquisition in the town of Wallingford Open Space Plan and in the town's P O C D or Plan of Conservation and Development. So when we look at the recreational activities or opportunities that will be available, these include walking and hiking, scenic viewing, orienteering, nature photography, cross-country skiing and stream bank fishing. And the exist, there are walking trails on the east or the right side of 264 Williams Road. And after acquisition, there is a plan to connect that, that existing walking trail to a new walking trail to the left or west of the Muddy River. And up towards the north or the top of the parcel, you can see a 50-foot wide portion of the parcel that will provide access from Williams Road into the parcel itself with a small gravel parking area. Active recreational activities will be prohibited. These include biking, horseback riding, hunting and trapping, and use of motorized vehicles, including ATVs and motorbikes. Once we acquire a property, I think one of the questions that doesn't get asked often but is important is operation and maintenance. The Wallingford Water Division will manage this property. It is within our expertise and distinctly in our wheelhouse. Each year, the annual budget includes funding for watershed properties maintenance. And the Water Division will coordinate with the Conservation Commission regarding the maintenance of the walking trails. So let's talk about the acquisition costs. So the negotiated price for parcel B is $750,000. There are Department of Law soft expenses, including two appraisals, a title search and title policy, and environmental investigations. Those are estimated at $25,000. So the budget amendment that was approved last Wednesday evening by the Public Utilities Commission and is in front of the town council this evening totals $775,000. And just for reference, if you divide that by 95.281, you get $8,133.84 per acre. So we now know the price. How will we pay for it? So as of June 30, 2021, the Water Division had retained earnings of $14.391 million. Budgeted use of cash for fiscal year '21-'22. So those are obligations we have in the current fiscal year for purchases we made in the prior fiscal year, And what are our cash reserve requirements? And so that is $7,284,002. And this is a formula. So this is not a number that we just pulled out of it air, excuse me, out of the air. It includes six weeks operating expenses, our principal and our debt, our current liabilities, prior year capital carryover. And then we do have a $1 million emergency reserve. So at the end, our forecasted cash above minimum at the end of the prior fiscal year, We take our forecasted cash above minimum. We subtract our acquisition expenses. And post-acquisition, our cash above minimum is $5,850,719. So let's look at our timeline. Last Wednesday, the Public Utilities Commission did approve the budget amendment. I was with the Planning and Zoning Commission last night for their action on Connecticut General Statute 8-24 regarding municipal improvements. Tonight, we are at the town council for two items, discussion and possible action regarding an agreement between the property owners and the town of Wallingford for sale of a portion of William, 264 Williams Road. And then discussion and possible action of the budget amendment for the Water Division. And then next Friday, November 19th, we will, the town staff will be submitting an open space and watershed land grant program application to the DEEP. Touch, just touching base on that quickly. It does provide financial assistance to water companies to acquire land that will be classified as Class 1 or Class 2. There are some caveats. All land must be accessible to the public without limitation. And here's the kicker. Land already owned by the applicant is not eligible. And some of the scoring criteria, they do have a point breakdown, statement showing purchase funds available. That is why we're here this evening. Proof of stewardship funding and capability to operate and maintain the property. Again, this is what the watershed, excuse me, the Wallingford Water Division does. Municipal letters of support. And we also look at natural resources as far as grant scoring preserves the drinking water resources and Class 1, Class 2 watershed lands. And here is an aerial view looking east. So you can see the edge of the cleared area and then the forested area in the background. And with that, I will open it up to any questions and discussions.
What's up with the dog?
So that is my dog, Penelope. That once or twice a week, she does go to school, aka doggy daycare here in Wallingford. So on the left, that is her with a lot of energy before she goes to school. And on the right is our commute home.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. Okay. So at this point, do we have any more in terms of presentation? Or is it a good time for- time for questions? Why don't, so I suspect your questions are for Mr. Amweek or the administration, and then we'll, we'll hear from the Conservation Commission. So, Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Amweek. First of all, I'm very much in support of this, excited, all that stuff. The agreement calls for CLMP to assent to a gravel driveway. Where are we with that?
I will defer that question to the Mayor.
Janus has spoken with EverSource. We don't expect there to be a problem. They also have gravel access to other space on the Williams Farm in order to address clearing and other issues regarding the transmission lines that go across Williams Farm property that is the town's open space at this point. So we don't expect that there'll be any real problem.
And then who is going to be responsible for maintaining, you know, I understand it's going to look nice six months from now, right? But 20 years from now, I'm hoping that it's not overgrown. Who's responsibility? Is it, is it Public Works or is it the Water Division?
So that will be the watershed crew of the Water Division. We have a dedicated three-person team that takes care of all the watershed lands as well as all our grounds at our various facilities throughout the community.
Okay. And then, and I thank you for the presentation because it answered a lot of my questions. So there was a portion of it that said that the Water Division was going to coordinate with the Conservation Commission with regard to the trails. What does that look like? I mean, are they deciding where the trails go and you're blazing them? Or, I don't know. What does that partnership look like?
So that, so that partnership is still a work in progress. We really would need to have further discussions post-acquisition regarding who's going to do specifically what trail maintenance. Our understanding, my understanding at this time is the existing trail east of the Muddy River is in place. It would probably need to be widened a bit and just strengthened. The trail to the left or the west of the Muddy River would need to be established.
Okay. So right now, we don't know who's doing that work?
So in preliminary discussions we've had is the Conservation Commission would take the lead on maintaining the actual trail itself, the width of the trail, the west, the remainder of the property would be maintained by the Wallingford Water Division.
Okay, but a portion of this trail is not there now.
Correct.
And the existing trail, you said, should be widened, which, you know, I guess that's a subjective determination because widening a trail may open it up to ATV activity and that kind of stuff.
I think when I say widen, I just mark it a better, clear it a little better, so it's maybe more than two sneakers wide.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I think you can sense, I'm, I'm just concerned about 10 years from now, me being able to do that stream bank fishing on the Muddy River that we're buying here tonight, because that's a very important part of this to me. Signage. Who's responsible for putting the signage in that says you can do this stuff? You can't do that stuff? I didn't see that in the, in the agreement. What's anticipated here?
Typically, if we receive the grant, the grant requires the town, and it would probably be through water if you're going to be managing the property. But otherwise, Conservation, we would be erecting signs with the appropriate indications of, of the purchase, that it's down open space, what the rules are, et cetera.
Okay. So then I would expect, because I know they have a very limited budget, I would expect that there's going to be some budgeting.
So we have similar signs at Mackenzie Reservoir regarding the fishing right now. So it would, it would be within that characteristic.
Yeah, but who's budget? Is it going to come out of the grant? Is it going to come out of Conservation's budget? Who's, who's in charge of this?
I don't, I don't believe there's money in the grant for that, but it would come out of operational budget. So whatever Water Division cannot do for one reason or another, then it would be Conservation that would be handling it.
And when do we anticipate, first of all, owning this property, assuming, you know, this thing happens tonight, and completion of this project? The trails, the signage?
We, we would have to, we cannot close on the property prior to the grant award. So it will wait for the grant award, and then subsequent to that, a closing date would be established, I believe.
So given what was pointed out about the grant, it isn't like we can acquire it and then get reimbursed because you can't own it?
You will, you will default your grant application at that point.
Okay. So do we reasonably expect that a year from now, we can be using this? Is that a reasonable expectation?
Right now, I believe there should be an announcement in early spring as to the grant, and there should be a closing, certainly by late spring, if not sooner. It really is conditioned upon the grant award, but I don't see anything that would hold it up as long as we have the funds available and we have to do the environmental inspection. If there's, if it's a clean environmental inspection, that's one scenario. If it isn't, then that creates another series of, of steps to be accomplished before there'd be a closing. So that's the phase one environmental review.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm extremely interested. I want to see this happen, and I'm hoping for good things here. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, the only thing I liked about the Zoom meetings was seeing Penelope every once in a while, so I'm glad we got to see her again tonight. Do we know how much the grant could be? Do you have any idea?
No, we do not. It's, it's a, it's a highly competitive process, and it will not, my suspicion is, is it will not be for the full amount.
Okay.
They tend to spread the grant money around, so various applying entities get a portion of the purchase price.
Okay. So $750,000 is the most we could spend, and then the grant will come off of that whatever amount we get, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Have we had the appraisals yet? Do we have the amount of the appraisal?
We do.
Is that something we can disclose tonight or no?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question.
Can, are you able to disclose the amount of the appraisals tonight?
Yes, the appraisal was $675,000.
So we came to the 750 just through negotiations, even though let's hire them what the appraisal was?
So, right, in order to reach agreement with the property owners, we, we came higher and they came a little lower, and that's, that's the number.
Okay. Okay, and my only other questions are in regards to the recreation. What is the reason why biking or hunting or horseback riding, I mean, I could understand motorized vehicles, but biking, hunting, horseback riding, why would those not be allowed?
So they are prohibited under the grant application.
Okay. All right. And my only other question, and Counselor Fishbein touched on this, would this be something where the Park and Rec Commission would be involved with the trails or only Conservation Commission or possibly both?
Since this would eventually be Class 1 and Class 2 watershed lands, the Water Division would, would take the lead. I think, I think actual functionality and operational is, it's still to be, to be determined among the Water Division, Conservation Commission, as, as well as Public Works.
Okay, but we don't, do you not want Parks and Rec involved? Do we not want this viewed as a, as a park where people are actively, I know we had a discussion, a previous meeting about Conservation Commission working with Parks and Rec in regards to trails and use of trails. Is that something that could be looked at, or do we not want this viewed as a park where we have a lot of traffic?
I think the important distinction here, this is not a park.
Right, okay, that's.
It's, it's Class 1, Class 2.
Yep.
Managed by the Water Division for protection of the water supply. So it would not be a park. It can be used for certain very specific and limited purposes. And trying to be true to that and honest with it, it's in our own interest to, to obey all of those rules. I would think recreation probably would, would not be directly involved.
Okay, understood.
Correct. If you look at the fishing areas at Mackenzie Reservoir that are open to the public, those areas are maintained by Water Division staff.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I had a question about the mountain biking as well, but I guess my other question is, do we anticipate further, are we looking at any other parcels of land along the Muddy River, being that it's such a priority for purchase of open space?
We are always looking in sensitive areas for pieces of property, and certainly the Muddy River is a very sensitive and attractive subject for us.
I like the idea of acquiring open space. I like the idea of this open space because it's water property. When you said that we're above the appraisal, I have a little bit of pause because we're in such a hot, you know, economy right now in terms of real estate. You know, I, I guess, so this was on our last meeting agenda, right? And then it got pulled off for whatever reason, we got the Water Division involved. I guess it's fortuitous that we didn't vote on this at the last meeting when we were, we were looking at bonding to purchase this land. So I suppose that the fact that it comes from the Water Division's retained earnings makes, makes more sense in that regard. But I guess that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So some of my questions were, were answered already prior from the other counselors, but I just want to get a clarification on something I, I thought I saw. Earlier on in, in the presentation, you said that there was going to be a limited, limitation of use on the property. Is that correct? Did I read that slide correctly?
So only passive recreational opportunities will be allowed on the property.
So how can we do that and then apply for a grant that says we have to allow for access that's not limited?
So the grant specifies the access should be for passive recreational activities.
So how do we define, what I don't want to have, and it's, it's a stretch part of the conversation, we, we talk about having open space and letting people have access. And Tyler Mill is not a park, it's open space, and we've got trails in there, and then we've got some problems with how we get the access in there and for what activities. So are we sure that if we go for the grant, we're not going to have a problem saying, you cannot do this and this is okay? Are they, are they defined well enough?
Yes. So Engineering Section staff and myself have been involved with the Department of Law and Program Planning and the Environmental Planner to write the grant application, as well as referencing the grant guidelines. So we like these recreational activities, we like these passive recreational activities, we support prohibiting the active recreational activities. The active recreational activities, quite frankly, are degrading to the property.
And that, and that was my only concern. I'm sorry, Mr.
I think one thing to keep in mind, Tyler Mill area is after the water has reached Mackenzie. So it's, it's not part of the system that provides water to our, our reservoirs. So it doesn't have the same issues surrounding it as this piece of property, which is north of Mackenzie Reservoir and, and is the water that ultimately we will be using. What passes out of Mackenzie Reservoir is what flows through the Tyler Mill area. So it's not as restrictive there. But Neil is very correct. This, this is a watershed protection grant. So it is tailored to insist upon the controls that will protect the quality of water.
And, and that's really where I was going with my question. If we're going to put the restrictions down, I wanted to make sure that there isn't a future argument that, well, the, the application requires that we give access, but you're saying it's only passive access, so you can limit the other types of access there. Tyler Mill is also in the watershed, is it not?
It is in the, it is part of the future watershed.
And, and that's the reason, and, and that was the reason why I, I wanted to kind of expand upon that, that piece of it. If it's a future watershed area where we might go to dig, I, I don't know, what would we do out there? Would we be digging wells? Would we be digging capacity storage out there?
No, at some point, there was a study done about 15, 18 years ago to put another groundwater well in the Tyler Mill Preserve. So within Tyler Mill would not be surface water, it would be groundwater.
Okay. And, and I, I'm trying to remember, Mr. Germer, I might have even been talking to you at the time about it. Wouldn't that require us to take a future look at what we're doing at Tyler Mill and possibly restrict it based on surface, surface activities leaching down into our future water that we might be doing out there?
So at this time, we are, the Water Division is comfortable with the activities in, in Tyler Mill. I think we are taking a long-term look at what our supply, what our water supply is, as well as our safe yield. The Public Utilities Commission and the Town Council has previously approved budget to look at an engineering study for Yulbrook Reservoir. So we're taking a look at that first, and then we will continue to look at our opportunities. But Tyler Mill would be a groundwater supply well.
Okay. And, and, no, I think that makes sense. I think that was all my questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's Counselor Fishbein?
I'm just having a little trouble with the passive recreation thing. Am I to understand that the application says that the activities that you listed are prohibited, or is that an interpretation?
No.
I was understood, based upon what you said, that the, the grant application says you cannot have biking.
Correct.
Okay. Does it actually say that or does it say passive recreation? It shall only be for passive recreation?
I don't have the grant application in front of me. I mean, that's a very granular question. I would, I would have to refer to the document.
Okay, because I.
In a perfect world, the Water Division would prohibit public access.
Understood.
But we are allowing passive recreational activities because it is a requirement of the grant application.
Understood. So then it comes to the question, what is a passive recreational activity? And I'll tell you that I just looked up, and according to DEEP, which is the one that would approve the grant, hunting is a passive recreational activity. So it begs the question, is it a subjective determination or is it a requirement of the grant? And I, and I saw elsewhere that, that biking is also. So, you know, and, and I, I know you don't more than likely watch our meetings, but we recently had a meeting where somebody came to us and they said, you guys got a grant for a piece of property, and we should be able to utilize this piece of property because what we're doing is within the four corners of what is permitted. So that's where a lot of these questions are coming from. So 20 years from now, you know, somebody could say, well, Town of Wallingford, you took money, grant application said passive, I'm doing passive, you have to allow me to do it, otherwise give back the money. That's the concern here, at least from sitting here, okay? So I guess I want to see the grant application at some point, so that I can make a determination. Not that.
Was the previous parcel within or with, was the previous parcel within or out of the watershed protection district?
It's Tyler Mill.
Okay.
So it's, it's almost the same exact situation.
And again, I'll refer to the Mayor. Tyler Mill is downstream of the Mackenzie Reservoir. This parcel is less than one-half mile up gradient of Mackenzie Reservoir, where we get 94% of the water.
I don't, no, I don't.
In the, in the prior world, I was a, I was a consultant. I've inspected over 80 dams. I've inspected over 80 dams, and one of the worst things for dams is mountain biking. It's erosion, it kicks up. The number one sediment, or excuse me, the number one contaminant is sediment.
No, I don't.
So that's what we're trying to protect.
I don't disagree, okay? But we can make the choice, we've got money in the bank. Hey, we just, you know, $969 million, $1,000, we got back from the Board of Education tonight. We could buy this property, we could have whatever rules we want, right? But we're not doing that. We're going to someone else under a criteria that they have set up, you know? So certainly, you know, there's an archery hunting season, right? I don't think, I don't think that is going to negatively impact, you know, the watershed area to permit that activity there. You know, we could limit, you know, right? So if passive is hunting, then you could say this criteria is passive. So I'm just concerned about the representation as to what we can do, what we can't do with this property. I'm going to vote in support, I'm just very concerned about the restrictions, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to reference that, Craig, I think Mr. Amwick, if I heard him correctly, if it weren't for the grant, he would be saying there'd be no activity out there. So the grant is actually making it more liberal in the sense of allowing something. Otherwise, in order to protect the reservoir, they would not be allowing anything. Is that correct, Neil?
That is correct. If we were purchasing this outright without grant money, without the grant application, the recommendation from the Water Division would be to purchase it and prohibit access.
And I would vote against because I'm an outdoors person. So, you know, a lot of the presentation was what we can do with this property, and, you know, that's that's usually the way that I go about this. It's 94 acres, right? So, you know, we could have, you could act harmoniously, you could say, we don't want anybody near the the Muddy River, right? But we're going to have trails in this area, put up a fence, right? And then, yes, the public use loses the ability to use the river, but the two activities could work harmoniously even under that situation. So we're not there at this point.
But but just keep in mind, yes, it says what activities can be there, but I think as Mr. Amwick has pointed out, 94% of our water is from surface water, it's not the wells. So it is of critical importance that we protect that supply, Muddy River being the primary conduit for that water to reach us. So if you're weighing, well, the right to have fun on the property and the assurance that we will have the potable, potable, however you want to pronounce it, water in the future, the weight has to come down on protecting the water. So I I think there's a middle ground, and I think we're looking to achieve that with the terms of the grant. But I also salute the Water Division and their very, let's call it aggressive effort to protect the supplies that this community, the entire community, will depend upon for the foreseeable future.
Okay, Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I understand that this is, you know, the purpose of this is to protect the drinking water, not for recreation or, so I understand through the discussion that that's our goal. I just wanted to hear from you, if if we did not purchase this, is this lot, is this whole area buildable or is it wetlands? It looked a little wet when I drove by, is it?
I I could not answer that question.
Okay.
I just, I strictly looked at it from a from a water quality watershed protection lens.
Okay, so I guess I just want to know from you, what would what would your fear be if we did not buy this? What could happen there that would affect, what would be the effect if houses were to be built or something else were to happen with that land?
So we have a water quality team, and we inspect every every year, we inspect every single property within the watershed. We walk every single property to look for abandoned cars, failing septic tanks, so if there, as well as, you know, commercial enterprises. So if it were to to be developed into residential parcels or commercial parcels, we would add it to our water quality inspection list. I mean, if you look at the map of the watershed protection district, there are houses in there, there are commercial properties. This is something that is just part of how we run our organization.
But in your, but in your opinion, this is obviously a good, this is the highest level of protection we could get.
Correct, and the, you know, it is, and I think that's a, I think that's a great phrase, it is the highest level of protection, the entire parcel will be class one and class two watershed lands.
All right, thank you.
Maybe I can just help a little bit with that. In the discussions with regarding to the purchase, there there certainly were plans shown that that showed a potential subdivision. So there is wetland there, but there is there is buildable property. How many houses, how many lots, I can't give you a number on that, but certainly, at one time in the past, there was active, active pursuit of further development. Members of the Conservation Commission may have more knowledge or interest, information on that than I have currently, but I am aware that there certainly was, at one time, some effort to plan development.
We do have a member of the Conservation Commission patiently waiting, so if you come forward, I don't know if you've been before us on the record, so please introduce yourself for the record.
Yes.
Just wait till you get to the microphone.
Mike Miller, I'm the Chair of the Wallingford Conservation Commission, and I have a report prepared, most of which you've already, well, Neil is a hard actor.
It's, Mr. Miller, yeah.
Sorry about that.
The the crowd is not hearing you, and they're frustrated.
All right, again, Mike Miller.
And you should keep the mic closer.
All right.
There you go.
Better? All right, we got it now. Thank you.
You're on.
So Chair of the the Wallingford Conservation Commission, I'm here tonight representing the commission, so some of whom are in the back row up there. And anyway, I have a report prepared, which I'm going to hand around. Fortunately, most of the report has already been covered by Neil, so he's he's also a much better presenter than I am. But I would like to hand this around and just go over a couple high points. And of course, any questions, you know? So this property, first off, the Wallingford Conservation Commission unanimously and strongly supports purchases of this property. It, this was identified in our 1999 Open Space Plan as a very high priority area for preservation for the reasons that Neil has already mentioned. So the property owners reached out to the commission about two years ago, and we've been talking to them since, and I want to thank Stevens, they've been very good about this whole long process. The 95-acre parcel stretches from Williams, as you saw on the map, stretches from Williams Road and eastward all the way to the top of Washington Ridge behind the property. So has a variety of different landforms, pasture, hayfield, as you saw, early successional forest, river floodplain, a variety of wetland types, including a rare perched wetlands, which sits below the ridge, talus slopes, it has a salt ridge, and the majority of the property has been identified as a class one watershed, as Neil has mentioned. So, and this feeds, again, it feeds to the McKenzie Reservoir immediately downstream, about a half mile downstream. So we have a Cooper's Pond, also called Scars Pond, is a perched water body on the ridge behind the property, and that holds a tremendous amount of water which will percolate down through and feeds the wetlands below the ridge, which in turn feeds the Muddy River, which in turn feeds the McKenzie Reservoir. The all of the property, all of the runoff on the property ultimately goes into the Muddy River, so, you know, the 95 acres equates, one inch of rain basically equates to about two and a half million gallons of water, of clean water, that's feeding the reservoir. So it's quite important for water recharge. So what does losing this property mean? It, again, the above-mentioned loss, you know, we would lose the clean drinking water supply, we would receive impacts to the town's water supply from pesticides, fertilizers, pesticides, oil runoff, et cetera. We have an increased cost to the town over time, education, infrastructure maintenance, other municipal services, and a loss of passive recreation area, however you want to define that. So, and then preserving this, in turn, would help to ensure the clean drinking water supply for the town. It helps to counteract climate change via carbon sequestration, it provides that passive rather, recreation, protects the river, the wetlands, and the other habitat, and it provides a wildlife corridor with open space to the north with Tyler Mill to the south. So, and this helps to maintain the rural qualities of this section of Wallingford, which a lot of businesses rely on and and the residents, you know, desire. So, and it maintains an overall high quality of life in Wallingford. So for all of these reasons, the Conservation Commission unanimously, again, and very strongly recommends purchase and preservation of this property. Thank you.
So I know what the word carbon means, and I know what the word sequestration means, but I don't know what the two mean together.
Okay. It means you, it's tying up a lot of carbon, right? The plant growth and it just, it takes a lot of carbon out of the air and bonds it into the environment.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Give me my.
Yep.
Looking at the math here, it seems the sellers are keeping 13 acres here.
Yes.
And do we know, is that developable?
That is a better question for the mayor. I actually, I'm, I don't know if they could subdivide it or not, if that's your question.
I believe they intend to do some farming of some type or animal raising, but I don't, I don't believe that they have any plans to subdivide.
Okay, just concerned that we may end up in the same, you know, we're talking about the development and lack of development may end up in the same place because the agreement calls for a subdivision here, you know, to subdivide the 108 acres to do the split off, and I'm just.
Yeah, well, that's because I believe there was already one parcel that was sold, separated from what we now know is the 100, 105 acres. So that would mean this sale would create another division.
Okay, that answers that. Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here and this project, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it helps at all, on on the larger map over here, you can see there's a, in that area that they're retaining, there's a lot of wetlands in the center that he probably wouldn't be able to build on, although at the same time, the small, the smaller area that I guess I would call west of that wetland area is right by roadside. So if they were going to do anything to subdivide, I would expect it would be at that road edge as opposed to maybe anything further inland. I'm I'm pretty comfortable with with the piece that they're trying to keep because my estimation is they couldn't subdivide it much. I think there's two acre zoning out there, and so they they couldn't subdivide it down very much. And I would, I would expect anything they might subdivide it down to would be roadside. So if that helps anybody at all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the public? If not, the first motion is on the table, and it's to consider and approve the agreement. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Zavoni.
Yes. Wow, passed unanimously. Can we have a motion on item eight?
Move we approve appropriation from cash to land and land rights in the amount of $775,000 from appropriation from cash to land to land rights account.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Chortel. You did cover this in your presentation, Mr. Amwick. Any questions on this part of the purchase? Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Zavoni.
Yes. Once again, passed. Thank you both for your.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your presentations and your personal investment in this. On to item nine, discussion and possible action regarding quarter one fiscal year 2021, 2022 general government actual versus budget performance. Counselor Chortel, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This really, others may have questions. My focus on this was more or less, it came from a question, and the question was, with all the open positions we have in town, how is that impacting the budget year-to-date? Now, year-to-date, it's only the first quarter, so I fully recognize it's early, you know, it's early, it's not a lot, I mean, it's 25% of the year, so I'm not, I'm not looking to deep dive into much here, there's just a few questions I have, again, about the open positions, others may have other questions. So the first thing I want to go into, I, and Mr. Hutt is here, and he provided me and the council with a list of all the open positions as of now, and I have, I just have a couple questions on that list. Sorry, I know you're here for something else, but. Hope he's not, name, name for the record, please?
Sure.
I've always wanted to do that.
Good evening, Jim Hutt, Town HR Director.
Thank you. So on this memo that you sent around with the open positions, when there, so for example, police officer, it says parentheses seven, that means there are seven police officer positions that are open. Is that how I read the memo?
That's correct.
It's not like a police officer, level seven, that's what I was, like, versus.
That's correct.
Okay, got it. So when I, and I counted these last night, I mean, they're, they're almost 30 positions. I might be off a little bit.
So if I can add, there's, this is a work in progress. This list has already changed.
Okay.
Between Friday and today.
Wow, okay.
There are exams that are scheduled, so where you see tested next to the position, that means there's an active list, and the recruiting is actively going on based upon what the department can do in order to do the interviews, so.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate that, that it's constantly changing. All right, so my, my, my next question's a global one. When I look at this list, are all of these positions, I, when I say open position, I, in my head, that means it's budgeted, and it's just, there's not a body in it.
Well, these are the positions that we're actively recruiting for right now, so there may be positions that are budgeted that haven't been requested to be filled at the moment.
Okay, so there could, all right, hold on, let me, let me back up there. So these, all right, so let me start, everything on this memo is a budgeted position.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. So for example, the seven police officers, those are in the budget, there's just, we're waiting on the academy, we're waiting on whatever, but those are, those are in the budget.
That's correct.
Okay. And then you said, though, there could be other positions that we're not actively recruiting for that are also budgeted, that are not on this list because we're not actively recruiting.
I don't know if they're budgeted, but I do know that there have been some positions that haven't been, you know, that aren't being recruited for right now.
Okay, that's fine, I'm not even concerned about that, I, that's, that's fine. I just, everything on this piece of paper represents something in the budget. Okay, so my next question, then, I think maybe is more for Mr. Senna. When I look at the September report, the monthly financial report, and I would take two examples, you made a comment earlier in this meeting that you're like at half-staff. So then when I look at the salary line for your department, and I'm trying to find it here, it is, it looked like it was at nineteen percent. So we're twenty-five percent of the way through, you know, through the year, I would think it would be like way less than that because we, we don't have, we're not paying out those salaries, but I could be misreading or misinterpreting the report. And then another example, which I do have, is the police. So the police budget right now through three months, regular salaries and wages, account fifty-one hundred, is at twenty-four point six percent, twenty-five percent of the way through the year. So in my mind, if we're down seven off, just, and there's other police positions in the, not even beyond the seven officers, there's some clerical, it just feels like, I know that when we, a few years ago, we did something with the pool and we diverted some money, and I think you told me a police officer, you'd budget about a hundred and ten thousand dollars per officer, roughly, was what we should.
That's probably about correct.
Yeah, it wasn't the pool, yeah, I think Counselor Laffin and Counselors Zandry and I put a proposal for more police, and we came up with a number of like two hundred and twenty thousand for two more officers. So, so when I see there's seven officers, my mind is doing the math, okay, that's, that's, you know, seven times a hundred thousand. So I guess, can you correct, set me straight on this and how I'm reading the reports, or if I'm?
The reports, the numbers are going to be a little skewed right now because we had two contracts that were settled, so there's retro wages in there that we have not moved out of contingency yet.
Okay.
So there was the clerical and public works union, it was two and a half years of back wages that got paid.
Okay.
So that's causing some of the numbers to look like there's more payroll in there, but that money is budgeted in contingency right now.
Right.
I haven't had time to do the calculations to come to you to move that money to the proper departments yet.
Okay, but that would, okay, so that money would show up, right, that's in contingency. But it's, so you're saying it's not yet in this line? I guess I'm still, I'm still struggling with this, I look at the police.
So the expenses are in there.
Okay.
But the budget hasn't been matched up yet.
Okay. So when that happens, then this will look more like reality, like.
Yes.
Okay. So then we would see that there is extra, or we're carrying extra money because, got it, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Those were my major, really, those were my, my questions on the open positions. I think this is something the council should be looking at, you know, periodically throughout the year, just versus just at budget time, you know, so it's, so we're kind of up on it, but that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to kind of outline one point when we were talking about adding the two police officers to community pool, and it was the one-ten. That was both a calculation of salary and benefits, not, not straight-up salary. But I actually did some additional homework on this as well. So Counselor Chortel, you were working from the last report out that we got, which was the first quarter, but I pushed, I pushed the math out farther because we're basically in the second week of November, and we'll be at the end of the fiscal year, and I'm, I'm going to be, I'm going to spitball and say most of these positions won't be filled before the end of the year with all the testing, and, and then the offers have to go out and start dates and everything else. And so I spent a little time going down just the town side. I left the water and electric division side out. I went through the eighteen roles that are posted here, and as you kind of outlined, seven positions here, four maintainer positions, public works, and so forth. This is, across these thirty job openings, is one point nine million dollars that we budgeted that we're not yet spending, but will probably get spent starting somewhere in December, somewhere in January. So that means basically, even though we budgeted and taxed on effectively two million dollars of just salary, because I went through the budget book and pulled all the salaries out, that even if we hired all of them for January first, there's going to be a million dollars of unspent salary. And to your point, and you and I won't be sitting up here, we should be looking at it. The council should be looking at it because this is exactly what happens every budget season. We come in and we sit down with the budgets and we ask the police department, the fire department, public works, you have an open position, you have two open positions, you reduced a position, but you have got two more, are you planning to hire? And we're always told yes. And this is not to suggest that these departments are not actively trying to fill them, I'm certain they are. But the wheels of, the wheels of municipal activity turn very slowly, whether that is a function of, it's just a requirement, that's the way it goes, or it's done on purpose to keep these monies idle. People that will leave jobs in March or April, those jobs won't get filled the remainder of a fiscal year, and then we'll be in the middle of budget season going through the same thing again. These are, these are a lot in salaries, and like I said, I didn't even go through the, I don't know, nine or ten, the utility side. I just went through the thirty, and the police officers' salary straight up, that alone is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If we do the entire police department with the clerk typist, the dispatchers, the maintainer for the police department, that's seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars all by itself. So I'm, I'm glad you put the item on the agenda. I, I would deliver the same message, we should be looking at it, and that is for the seven counselors that'll be sitting up here and the two new ones that are coming on board. This is important, this is why we sit up here and go, we're trying to hold the line on raising taxes, and we end up growing the general fund balance, because this money gets allocated, taxed, and it doesn't get spent correctly. And the worst part about that is, that means the service is, is not being delivered to the townspeople and the businesses that are paying for it. If there's one less police officer on duty, then there's one less patrol going out. If there's one less mechanic to work on something, a truck isn't getting fixed, a car's not getting fixed, and so on. So we really should look at this a little bit better as a council and, and do what we can to try to move this along and, and keep it under more observation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Just from my observation, it is rare that I do not see when someone leaves an authorization coming through to be hiring a replacement. I do not think there is, I have, I can't, sitting here, tell you that there's a deliberate delay going on. I'm not aware of it, Jim?
No.
I mean, as a general rule, when, when, and we have had retirements that are totally unexpected, many, and immediately, when I get the notice to sign off on the final pay voucher, it's, it's authorization to fill a position. So there's not a, there's not an orchestration here in order to make sure there's money left over. Our orientation is to provide service, but the numbers of people aren't out there to hire right now.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm just going to make a very simple example, the fact that Mr. Boz identified way early on when he was going to retire, and, and we did not move that effort forward. I, I am of the opinion, and we'll keep it at my opinion, that we could be moving faster and better and more efficiently about trying to get these positions backfilled. Some you can't. The police department completely get that officers are an entirely different mechanism, but a lot of these other jobs, I disagree, we could be moving faster and better and backfilling them quicker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My question is for, for Mr. Senna. You know, like if you look at the life insurance tables, right, the same number of forty-five year olds is going to die this year as died last year in America, like, so, you know, on average, right? And the number kind of doesn't change from, from year to year, generation to generation. So, so where am I going with that? So the, if we look at the number of people, so we budget for a hundred percent of the positions that we have, right? But we know that, that the odds are that a certain number of people are going to be on maternity, or are going to be on comp, or there's going to, or they're going to quit, or there's going to be some other circumstance where they're not going to fill those roles. So I guess the problem for me is like seven police officers out of work is a lot, is a lot of people, you know, a lot of bodies, and I, I know we're trying to actively fill those positions. Is there a better way to account for these so that we know what the salary we actually intend to spend versus the budgeting for every position for money we know we're not going to spend at the end of the year? And I can appreciate why you want to have the money set aside because you don't want to have a bump, you know, in the next year when finally you fill these positions that weren't accounted for. But it seems the budget and my estimation, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the budget, my estimation, should be the amount of money that you intend to spend in the coming year. And we have an expectation that we're not going to spend all this money because we know we're not going to be able to fill all these positions. So, your thoughts?
I believe in the budget document, when, when you look at the personnel detail, the mayor's philosophy is to have the salary be with the bodies. So I believe the mayor, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I think his philosophy is that if the position is open, then you should have the funding in place. If the position is going to be filled and it's an active position, then the funding should be in place.
So I'm, I'm certainly aware in other governments where they don't quite budget for everyone, and then they end up with a deficit because, oh, they can't fill positions or they don't have enough money or whatever. If we're going to tell the public that we're going to have ninety police officers, then the budget should have funding for ninety police officers. Otherwise, if the funding's only for seventy-five or eighty, then we're not telling the public honestly what we're, what we're funding, because the budget says ninety, but we're only funding seventy or eighty or whatever number we come up with, and that can move all over the pipe. Anyone can guess at what the number might be, one year you'll be right, another year you'll be wrong. But I think honesty in the budgeting would say, if we're telling the public we'll have ninety sworn officers, that's what the budget should fund. If we're only funding eighty, then the budget should say we're funding eighty. But it's got to true up with what we're telling the budget, telling the public is in the adopted budget.
And to be quite frank, I agree with you a hundred percent, Mayor. I think you need to be honest in the budget and that you need to predict what it is that you're going to spend. So if you intend to have ninety officers, but you know you're only going to be able to fill eighty-five, then to fund at ninety isn't necessarily an honest assessment of what you intend to spend in the coming year. It's your best-case scenario if you could do the thing you know you're not going to do. So I guess my question's from an accounting practice, do other communities do things that you're aware of? And I'm not saying, you know, I know some communities do like the dollar, you know, for a position that you're not going to fill, which I think is a bad idea. But would it be possible to separate the salary into, say, two categories? So I guess my issue is every year, most of the, with the exception of one department recently, most departments have a surplus in the salary line at the end of the year. And we sort of know why because we bake in the surplus at the beginning, and I'm just trying to get a handle on, is there a way to know in advance what the, what the intended surplus is versus, you know, the unanticipated surplus?
Well, I have not in one budget budgeted a surplus in salaries. That's my belief. Not once. I don't put money in there because I want extra money at the end of the year. The money is there to fund the positions that are listed. If there's five positions, there should be money for five positions. If we're only going to have four positions there, if, if we know that someone's going to retire, we're not going to fill it, okay, then you could put in a half-year of salary there, but then you end up with a question, well, the person said they might retire, but they might not. So now you're faced with, are you going to fire them or lay them off halfway through the year? Well, probably not. So if they change their mind, the money has to be there. I, I don't know how, I don't know how, you can, you can guess, but if we're only going to fund for four position out of the five, then the budget should only have money for four positions, and the number of positions would be four. You shouldn't say there's five positions, but we're only going to budget for four because probably someone might leave. Well, that's, which is the truth there? You're telling the budget, you're telling the public you have five people that will be serving them, and really you know there's only going to be four. I, I don't know how you do that, honestly.
So, okay, but the opposite of that is, we're budgeting for a certain number of positions, say, in the police department. We know we're minus seven positions right now, right? So we don't honestly intend to spend the money on all those seven officers because we know we're not going to be able to fill those positions. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think you could look at this from two angles. One is you need to account for everything, which you absolutely do, but does it need to come all in the salary line where we know we're never going to spend the money out of the salary line? So, you know, you could say you don't intend to put the money in there, and I believe that's an honest answer. However, the end result is we do have a surplus in virtually every salary line across the town budget.
Again, then you have to change the number of people that you're budgeting. If you have five people and you think someone will be gone, then you budget for four, but then the budget says four people. The budget can't say five people and then only budget for four. Otherwise, you know, we talk about transparency and honesty, it's not being honest if you say you're budgeting for five and there's only four, money for four.
So the question was, though, is there a way to account for the money you don't think you're going to spend on the salary line?
Well, if the money.
So I'm not saying to budget for fewer people that are cut positions, I'm saying that we know what we, what we intend to fill, but we know we're not going to fill them in a certain amount of time because, you know, the hiring process and so on. So my question is, is there a way to account for that delay?
I, by, by account for it, you mean budget less? I don't know what you mean by account for it. We're accounting for it now, we don't spend the money. If the money just disappeared and there was no one there, then that'd be rightful cause for concern. No, the money stays there and it becomes the subject of a transfer after April thirtieth, transfers within the department before April thirtieth. At the end of the year, it drops out as, as unspent, it's accounted for, so it's not like it disappears, but I don't, I don't know how you would, how you would. I, I don't know how you do it, you're, you're proposing without some, something not truing up.
Yeah, so my intent was not to propose anything, I'm merely asking a question, how do other towns do it? Because I can't imagine that every town everywhere has a surplus in every salary line.
I don't know what other, what other towns' budgets look like as far as what might be left over at a given year. I would think it would be the same kinds of issues. I, I don't think there's a magic to it. Certainly, I'm aware sometimes, you know, you certainly can put less money into a budget than what you would budget for, and my problem with that is, then it doesn't true up with what you're representing is the cost of providing that service. So does that happen elsewhere? I, my, my guess is it does.
So I keep asking a question, you keep answering with the same argument about cutting positions and so on. I don't know that I'm going to get a satisfactory answer tonight, so I guess I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Joe, I, I don't understand your question then. You're saying, how do we account for it? We account for it currently, the money doesn't disappear, it stays in the line and lets us transfer it out. You don't want to have money left over at a given year, I understand that, but the only way to achieve that is to budget less in that line item. So if we then, instead of budget for five people, we budget for four and hope it worked, it works out. We could do that, I don't recommend it, but we could do it that way, but the budget number should be four. Then we report that we have four people there, not five. Then the question would arise, well, how are we paying for five there? Now you have another budget problem.
And on my open positions, I'm intending to fill them all, but it's a very strange environment we're in now, where we're not getting the amount of people to apply for the positions so that the people that we're getting to interview to choose from are, are not suitable. We've, for the payroll clerk, we've hired people and had to not pass them on probation because they weren't working out. So we, we are trying to fill the positions. Right now, I have, I was interviewing today for the clerk typist. I have a list that I have to schedule interviews for, but with the two roles that I'm doing right now, I don't have time to constantly be doing interviews either, so I'm, I'm trying to space them out where I can continue to function in my role. But I have all intention of filling these positions, and I think, you know, for the police officers with seven, when the budget was made, I don't think they had seven vacancies. I think, you know, from when the budget's adopted, I think things change.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think I have every intention of filling your positions, I wasn't intending to imply that you were going to leave them open. I think the police had eleven positions open when we, when the, when Chief Ventura was here last time, so I think that that's been reduced to seven, and he had indicated that he has so many spots in the academy and so on. So my impression, based on his testimony last time, was that there's no way we're going to fill all those positions, you know, in this fiscal year. So that's sort of where my question's coming from, but I didn't intend to imply, you know, that you, I think all those positions are going to be filled eventually, it's just a matter of, you know, understanding where the, it's a lot of money that's hanging out there, you know, not being spent because we're not going to be able to fill all those positions in time, that's all. positions in time, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I think, the police have had a ton of open positions, even during this budget. It's been revolving, it's been, it's been a struggle for, it was a struggle for Chief Wright. And I think, I think it's, to Counsel Marone's point, and the mayor's point, I get, I get both points. I think there's a middle ground somewhere, and I think this is, but I think this is where Counsel Marone's coming from, I think where I'm coming from a little bit. When Chief Ventura sits here in April and tells us, I have seven openings, he flat-out told us, we're not going to be able to, it's going to take me a year. He literally said, it's going to take me a year to fill all these, because the academy takes so long, they're not, for all these reasons. And I guess the, I don't view it as a choice between, you have to cut the position, or you have to fully fund it. Maybe you fund it for eight months, or you fund it for seven months, and you keep the number of FTEs. I think that's what, not to put words in Joe's mouth, but I think that's kind of where, or Counsel Zandry's mouth, I think that's where we're coming from, is there could be creative ways to keep the position, but not fully fund it. But the fact is, the police line has been, has had huge surpluses the last few years. And in fact, if you look at the consent agenda, they've been spending, as they should, they've been spending that money, usually, starting in December, on a lot of purchases. But anyway, I have one final question, that has nothing to do with the police. It's, and it's the only other thing that struck me, and Mayor, I'll ask you, because I, again, this is why I did not intend to do a deep dive, because then that would just replicate what we do in April. But I, the only thing that struck me here, and I don't know if you have any concerns or not, is I did notice, on the fire line, the replacement pay is trending a little up. I mean, it's twenty-nine point five percent, so it's, it's a little high for this much into the year, and I just didn't know. Are you okay with that? Do you think that's going okay? I have no idea. I know we talked about it last budget, there's a new model, I know we had some issues last year, I just wanted to ask that.
I don't have any new information I can inquire about it, but I'm not aware of-
That shouldn't be, I guess, Michael, that shouldn't be a cause for, I mean, it's not that high, but it is a little higher than twenty-
Well, I think it's always a cause for concern.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no question about that.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go back to the document and the request. I know that's where we started, but, Mr. Hutt, is my understanding that the document that we have before us is the list of positions that we are actively looking to fill?
That's correct.
Okay. So that begs the question, are there any positions that we budgeted for that are not on this list?
I don't know what those would be. I could take a guess. At one position, Assistant Superintendent of Waste Treatment, we tried recruiting for that, and we were not getting any candidates for a variety of reasons, so we've held off on that recruitment right now. It's not an active recruitment, so...
Okay.
But if there's positions out there that are budgeted, that aren't on this list, I'm not aware of those, so...
Okay. So other than that one position, you believe this is a comprehensive list?
For what we're actively searching for right now. We have signed authorizations by the mayor to fill these positions, yes.
Okay. And these positions are basically in two classifications, once you determine that you want to fill it. It's posted, who's interested?
Yes.
And then tested?
Yes.
And then hired, they come off the list?
Correct.
Right. So I'm looking at a couple here. The Deputy Fire Chief?
Yes.
It does not indicate posted or tested.
Yes.
So-
And the reason for that is, we're currently looking at that job description, and more than likely, it will be before you, next council meeting, for revision.
Okay, so that-
It's an opening that the fire chief wants to fill.
Okay, but that opening took place at the end of the last fiscal year, right? At the end of June, when our chief retired?
I don't remember when Joe Sennar got promoted, but that's when that vacancy came up. And there was an exam, there was an exam that was done, and there was no successful candidates. So, I've been meeting with the fire chief to talk about a recruitment strategy. We've met with the mayor, and next meeting, we should be coming to you with a job description change.
Okay. I look forward to seeing that. And then, the maintainer one with the police department seems to be similar. So what's going on there?
Correct. That's another position that we're looking at. There was a recent vacancy. We're looking at a possible revision of that classification for the police department to reflect some duties specific to the police department. That's a work in progress right now.
Now-
So they want to fill that job, but we're not ready to post that yet.
Yeah, when we talk about job duties, job classifications, and you said that we're, you're redoing the one for the Deputy Fire Chief, what is our role? Is it our role to approve general government, Board of Ed, and Department of Public Works? I mean, not Public Works, Public Utilities?
I, I believe by the charter, your role is to approve all classifications in the classified service.
Okay, so, because I know, I think it was like two months ago, there was two job descriptions for, I believe it was Board of Ed. They were on our agenda, they got pulled off our agenda, we haven't gotten them back. Are you involved in that, or do they handle that?
They handle that, they, sometimes will show them to me to take a look at, and I'll offer some feedback. But those positions come from the Board of Education. That's been the practice here, that any positions in the classified service from the Board of Education get submitted to the town council by the Board of Ed.
Okay, so... Okay. And you're saying that's in the charter?
I believe so. I don't have the charter in front of me, but I believe the council does have the approval process for some of the classifications, yes.
Just, just because somebody brought to my attention the other day, that somebody got hired, the job description was apparently not approved by us, but you're understanding that we're supposed to approve all job descriptions for-
Well, there are, that just have minor changes, so for instance, if there's-
This was a new position.
What position is that?
I don't remember the classification, but-
I really can't answer that for you unless I have that specific-
Yeah, no, I know. Okay.
Was this Board of Ed, or town?
I believe it was Board of Ed.
Okay, well, if it's professional or certified staff, we don't approve those job descriptions.
Okay, so we have-
If it's in the classified service, they have positions there in the classified service, we deal with those job descriptions, right, Jim?
That's correct.
But not the certified, so teachers, professional, nurses, we don't, we don't do those job descriptions.
Yeah, it wasn't one of those. But okay, I got the answers. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just so I, one thing, and this will be coming up in our legislative package, with the utilities, getting people with the right certifications is, pumping operators, et cetera, is very difficult. And some of that problem is with deep, and the testing, and the certifying process that they really control. So, we may be looking for help from the legislature in order to make it more available for more people, because unless someone has those certifications, we can't hire them for the, for this specific job. And then just with regard to, in general, the discussion about number of positions, you know, we'll take a look at how we would reflect that we have positions, but they're not all budgeted for a full year. Because if we do that, there's got to be a clear representation to the public that some of these will come to an end, and if the person is still there, we either somehow find more money, or, you know, the employment is over. So, I just, I worry about that side of it. But we'll take a look at whether, whether, you know, and what formula, or how to approach that, that would be honest to everyone.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mayor, I appreciate that, that sentiment, because I think, I think that's a good approach, because, you know, the numbers that I threw out before were simply salary. It was the only thing I could extrapolate out of our great big budget book. So there are other considerations. When we put jobs together, and we put headcount together, it's salary and benefits. There's a, there's an inflated cost even beyond the numbers that I gave. And I think there's another reality, too, and Mr. Senna brought up these points, and so I'm going to make a general comment, and I don't want to make it appear as if I'm reflecting anything back to their hiring practices, or the procedures that they have to go through. This is, this is in general. And we're seeing it anybody that works in business, or in high certification jobs, or in technology. We have, we have problems hiring people, because the skillset bars keep getting raised, and much to Mr. Senna's point, you'll bring somebody on during a probationary period, so now that job comes off, the salary's actually being delivered, and the benefits are as well. And then, throughout the probationary period, the person doesn't work out, and now we have to start the cycle all over again. So, there's, there's a dip in paying for the person, but there's an added cost in the backend for having to go through this cycle all over again. And, and then on top of it, in order to try to get the right candidates in to start with, we have to take a look at what we're paying people salary-wise. Now, we've got a lot of, of jobs that are negotiated salaries, so there's not going to be that many, that much fluctuation in what can be done. But I know that, again, speaking from technology, a lot of times when I've seen people come into a role, and the salary bar was very, very low, we had a lot of turnover. Then you'd get that one person at that lower salary level that could do the job, and what did they do? They got six months to a year of on-the-job training, and then they jumped to a job for more pay. So these are the struggles that we're looking at. So I don't want anybody that's here tonight, or anybody watching at home, to think, this is very simple, we'll just do X, Y, and Z, and it'll work. It's, it's an orchestration of everything, so it's very involved. What I think the onus of what we were trying to discuss tonight is, how could we maybe tighten this up just a little bit better? Are there better ways to maybe reflect this? If, if much like what the mayor said, if they put in eight months out of twelve, and someone gets hired right away, and we run down to where there's four months left in the budget, what do we do? Are we able to move other monies around into the salary line item in order to make that salary number available for that person to stay? Or do we take the risk and reduce the position, and then have to go through the hiring cycle all over again? So, I think this is a very involved conversation, but I'm glad that we've had it, and we've gotten, what I, what I feel is, is some, some feedback from the administrative side that, hey, maybe, maybe there is a way to look at it, maybe it could be tweaked. So, that's encouraging. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the public? That would be Mr. Gross. Counselor Chertel is going to answer all of your questions.
I appreciate that. There is, I know of one job opening that the mayor has put in the budget that hasn't been filled, and Mayor said, a couple months ago, he's not filling it. So there are those positions there. That's wrong, but to the mayor's benefit, it is tough to budget in a municipal budget, where you have to make sure you have enough money to cover every salary. But at the end of the year, there should be a mechanism that the council should appoint, or do, that allows, after a certain percentage, just like the Board of Ed, put it in the charter, do something, that that money goes back into the general fund. It shouldn't be swept into his so-called slush fund, because putting, putting one of those jobs in there that he knew he wasn't going to fill, is just to build up his fund. So, those are things. But at the end of the year, you should have a mechanism to move money. Can you do something like that? Well, because there's millions-
Are you really asking Counselor Chertel?
Well, you're the one who said to talk to Counsel Chertel.
I'm sorry, I was zoning out, but I'm going to answer that. I, you said something that was, I think, incorrect.
Yeah.
If a budgeted position is unfilled, that money does go in, it isn't going to a slush fund, that extra money goes into the general fund, so I don't-
But the, but does it go off-
What's the slush fund?
Does it go off to offset our taxes at the end of the year?
No, no, but you mentioned a slush fund.
Okay, well, that's what I called it.
But that's not, okay.
It's the excess money-
They don't pay you enough, Benny. They got to increase the chairman's stipend. Anyway, continue, Mr. Gross.
No, so is there a way to do that?
Is there, well, to change the charter, you'd have to do charter revision.
But do you have to do it through charter revision, or no?
I have no idea. But, but what I would say is, what I was getting at with this, and I think I said this earlier, and the mayor just said, they look at it, is, if you know, sitting here in the six-week window that the council does have to influence the following year's budget, when the police chief sits at that table and says, I have all these open positions, and there's just no way I'm going to, there's no human way I can fill them, you then know, going in, going into the next year, that you're going to have some, some openings, and you're not going to fill them all, so maybe there is something you can do going into the next, going into the next budget.
It's difficult.
It is, well, it is difficult. And the mayor was not wrong when he said that, so yeah.
It's more difficult than having a mechanism that would allow you to claw back some of that money to offset the taxes at the end of the year, soon as you hit a certain percentage.
I'm not a fan of mechanisms, because I think what it does is, it takes away the council, each council's ability to do things. So for example, if there was a mechanism in place the last two budgets, maybe Counselor Tata couldn't have made her motion, or Counselor Testa's motion for community pool, which we'll talk about next, or some of the stuff I did the year before. So I, I don't, I'm not a fan of stuff like that, because I think that each council, that each budget's unique, each year is unique, and I think that it's important that each council be independent.
But every year, there's a, not every year, most years, mayor has a penchant for under, underestimated expenses-
Of course.
And overtaxing us by not filling a lot of these positions. It happens every-
Right, so I have actually a creative solution, and we're almost out of time getting a look here. I have a, do have a creative solution, which I did not bring up, but since you're asking. What I've told some of my counselors is, if you jack up some of the fees for the town clerk, that's how you get around that. So, and then you don't have to change the mill rate. So that's what I would propose to you, like, put a million dollars of revenue from town clerk, from like marriage licenses, and that will offset the spending. Craig's ear is perked up with that. So anyway, but thank you, Mr. Gross, you're at your time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There should be a way that you should do it. I mean, there, there's ways around it, and hopefully you'll do something, because every year, we keep overpaying our taxes.
All right. Really? Counselor Fishbein.
We only have six more weeks of this, but the, I would never want to profit off of individuals attempting to unite under the bond of love, so, absolutely opposed. Thank you.
Okay, so no increases in marriage licenses, that being decided. Thank you, Mr. Hutt.
Thank you very much.
I'm not going to ask you to stick around for the pool discussion.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion and possible action regarding Community Pool Park Fund. Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, Craig, I was saying you would adjust the projected revenue. You wouldn't charge a million dollars, but anyway, Craig. Okay, this, I think this hopefully will be quick. Mr. Senna, you and I disagree on the charter. So, I had asked about a month ago, where did the million dollars for community pool, we lost Counselor Testa, hopefully he's watching, but where did the million dollars, how does that affect, how does that work in the cap and non? So for the general public, when, when a project is initiated in cap and non, the town has three years to spend any of the money, any or all of the money. If the town does not spend a dime, if that money is appropriated, so let's use an example, let's say, we just redid the tennis courts at Doolittle. That was, I think, two budgets ago. So let's say that the Doolittle tennis courts, the town put in three hundred thousand in a budget year. If three years goes by, and the town does not spend a dime, by law, by charter, that money lapses. It stays in cap and non, but now that project is, is gone, and it just goes into the unassigned money. So, what I asked was, how does this work with Counselor Testa's million-dollar pool appropriation? And, because it's going into an existing account, that we already spent money on the project, but, but the appropriation was a separate thing. So, I had asked, and you would, and I appreciate the info you gave me, you had sent a memo on October eighth, and you said, the one million cannot be used until the town council And you said the 1 million cannot be used until the town council appropriates it for expenditure from the community pool park fund. We, we agree. But then you said, since this project already has expenditures for design, the appropriation would not lapse until the project was completed or abandoned. That's where I don't agree because I believe that this has nothing to do with the money that was already there. This is, this 1 million was its own appropriation. And if I read the charter, the charter, chapter 19, section 4, says appropriations, not projects, appropriations for construction or for other permanent improvements from whatever source derived shall not lapse until the purpose for which the appropriation was made shall have been accomplished or abandoned. Provided such appropriations shall be deemed to have been abandoned if no expenditure from or encumbrance of the appropriation has been made within three years of its approval. So if we don't spend a dime of that money, I would say that million dollars just goes into the unassigned. So, but tell me I'm wrong.
So I, I agree with what you said, but the million dollars, when you guys made that motion for the budget.
Yeah.
All that authorized was for a million dollars to be moved from the general fund-
Right.
-into the pool park fund.
Right.
That money is not appropriated. It is just sitting there. So, and appropriation can't lapse if it didn't happen. So the money is going to stay in the pool park fund until a project is approved or at some point where someone's going to come back and say, we need to move this money back to the general fund because the pool is not happening.
But isn't, but isn't everything in cap and non would be just how you described? So when we do townwide paving, we don't appropriate, we just move it from the general fund into the cap and non, don't we?
So this isn't in the cap and non fund. This is in its own separate bookkeeping fund.
Oh, so it's not in cap and non?
Yes. Did, did we, in the last audit-
Yeah.
-when we did the things, there, there is a fund called-
The community pool park fund.
Community pool park.
Okay.
That's where the money went.
So the rules of cap and non don't apply, you're saying, to the community pool park fund?
The, the rules do apply, but it, it's a separate bookkeeping fund. So, so the million dollars has not been appropriated. All we did was put the money there so that if the pool is approved-
Yep.
-we're going to need a bond ordinance. During that appropriation, we're going to say, okay, we need, if the pool's for 8 million dollars, we're going to need a bond authorization for seven and we're going to use the million dollars that's already in there to, and appropriate 8 million dollars for the pool.
So let me ask you this. So, so every budget, we move 1.8, 1.9 million. It comes in from the pilot, it goes into the general fund, and we move it over to cap and non.
That's its own separate fund that has its list of projects-
Right, right, right.
-that you, you agree that you approved during the same process.
So you're saying that's, so you're saying the movement of that money is an appropriation-
Yes.
-but the movement of the pool money was not an appropriation? It was just a transfer?
Correct.
Okay. Well, okay. So you're stuck with the pool money until it gets spent forever?
Yes, or somewhere along-
Or it could get transferred out. It could get transferred out.
It would have to be, you know-
An action has to be, okay.
Four budgets from now, it could be shown as a transfer into, back into the general fund for a million dollars.
And then last question, thank you for that. That's helpful. Last question, could, you said this, the rules apply. I was, I guess what I was, if we said, or if a future council said, we want to reopen the old pool, but it's going to cost 300,000 because we have to resurface it. Otherwise, we, the rest of them, and so it's, could that come out of this million legally? Is that a cap and non, is that appropriate? That type of expense?
Out of that million?
Yeah.
If it's used for the pool and it's brought forth and you appropriate it, yes.
It could, okay, okay. That's interesting. Okay. All right. I appreciate that. Thank, thank you for that information. I, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Laffin.
Thank you. Will this million dollars show as surplus at the end of the year?
Not in, not in a general fund. You know, in the audit report, it will be showing in that fund every year until it's spent or returned, but not as surplus in the general fund. It's being shown as spent out of the general fund.
It will show as spent?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you look at the, I did the transfer in September. So if you look at the September reports, under the, the cap and non, where there's the normal transfer, there's a million dollars showing that I've moved the money into the fund.
So if, if the money had not been moved to this account, to this line, and the money was not spent, at the end of the year, there would be essentially, there would be a million dollars surplus. We basically forced the million dollars to be spent so that it will not show up in surplus. Like we, we spent it into an account-
Correct.
-and sitting there. Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But we, we could also reappropriate. We could say we've got the million, it's earmarked for community pool. In the next budget, we could say, we're going to take it out of that account and use it to fund police officers. We can move it anywhere we want, right? Or we could take the mayor's proposed budget, which would expend, let's say, 2 million dollars out of cap and non. You say, we're going to credit against that, the million dollars, or stick the million dollars into cap and non recurring, which would start that timeline that Councilor Shortell was talking about, correct?
Yes.
You are not Jim Boas, but um- Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a quick one.
Councilor DeAndry.
Um, just, just because I want to be able to follow the, the logic that was just presented, that Councilor Laffin brought up. We, we won't show a surplus on the million dollars because you did the transfer and, and it's lodged, it is logged as spent. Similarly, if we were to have a budget that was, and I'll just make it so it becomes a round number, a million dollars we were running in deficit in totality, and we transferred that money back out and moved to the line items that were overspent, it would bring it to zero then. Is that correct?
I'm just, I, I need to, I get worried about the use of the word spent. It's, it's labeled something else, but is it really spent? Because that would trigger potentially the issue over three years then.
So the money is not spent, but you, you budgeted a trend for us, during the budget process, you told us to put a million dollars into the capital pool fund. So accounting wise, we have to show that as spent. It, it didn't go anywhere. It's just, it showed up, it went out of the general fund as a million dollar transfer out, and it went into the pool fund as a million dollar transfer in. So it's, each fund is showing a different piece, but the money didn't go anywhere. It's still in the town of Wallingford's cash. If that, does that help?
I think that, that avoids a spent, I think, is just not quite the right word.
And, and that's fair, and, and that's fair. I understand, I understand the, the, the counting piece of it. I just want to confirm, from my understanding, like I said, the, the opposite of what Councilor Laffin just identified. Because the money was transferred from, from the cap and non recurring to this line item, it would not, and we don't spend it by the end of the year, it would not show up as a surplus because it was line item moved. If in the same discussion point, we were somehow over budget by a million dollars because we had a bunch of capital expenses we couldn't figure, couldn't anticipate, we could then transfer that back out of cap and not recurring, slip it into the lines that got overspent, we would show a-
Excuse me, it's not in cap and not recurring, it's in the pool fund.
Pool fund. I, thank, thank you for the correction. But if we had to pull it back out of that and then move it to the line items that got overspent, we wouldn't show a deficit for that year because we would have utilized money that was already allocated to that line. Is that correct?
So are you saying if we had a deficit in the general fund of a million dollars and you wanted to transfer it back in to cover the deficit?
Basically, what I'm, what I'm trying to make sure that I understand is, we just talked about the potential of having a million dollars show up as a surplus, and you indicated that it wouldn't because it's been, it's been line item transferred to the pool. If the budget was going over by a million dollars, could we pull those monies back out, cover those expenses, and bring it to zero?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure that it works going in both directions and make sure that I had that as an understanding. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments from the public? Councilor Shortell, although you are not the public.
Not soon enough. I, I think just, just to clarify though, with Councilor Laffin's point, I mean, what we did what, well, what Councilor Testa did was, he starved cap and non. This money was never destined for the operating budget. This money was coming from the pilot, and then it got diverted to the pool because there was extra money in cap and non. So there would be nothing in terms of surplus, it's not going to, no, it's not going to show up as surplus, just like the 500,000 from the paving we didn't do in 2015 doesn't show up as surplus either. It just sits in the account. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh goodness. Councilor Fishbein.
No, I, because it's an interesting discussion. So in cap and non, we sometimes appropriate portions of expenditures, right? We've done that, correct? Like for future years?
Correct.
Okay. So my recollection of the motion that was made with regard to the, the community pool was not to move it out of cap and non to another account, but for it to be treated in that general fashion. It's a down payment towards future expenditure on the community pool. So how was the decision made to take it out of cap and non?
I think, I think there's, there's the issue. You can't take money out of the cap and non. Once it's in there, it stays. So when money was taken from the pilot, it was before it ever reached cap and non. It was transferred, it never went into cap and non, it was 800, what was it, 800,000 went into cap and non and a million dollars went elsewhere. It never went in cap and non because once it goes in cap and non, I believe that's the accounting, it can't come out.
Well, it could, but there's a procedure. I, you got to make a recommend-
I don't think so.
No, it's, it's in the ordinance. You have to make a recommendation, we have to approve, it's the same sort of thing.
I, I don't think accounting wise, but-
Well-
It's another discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Okay. So that explained, never made it to cap and non, so therefore, I understand. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And just to, so you guys know, the, the money can't be spent. It's not authorized to be spent on anything. It's just going to sit there until something, we're told otherwise what to do with it.
Thank you. Last call, questions or comments from the public? There being none, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 1-225F and 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the following pending, pending litigations. Baker Properties Limited versus Town of Wallingford, Sapphire Group 151 LLC versus Town of Wallingford, and Sapphire Group 153 LLC versus Town of Wallingford.
Moved and quietly seconded by Councilor Fishbein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I declare the council in executive session. I declare the council in executive session.